Really appreciate the conversations over the last couple of work sessions on that, too. I think we made some pretty good strides as we went through all this. Hopefully, we'll have some good results from this.
We'll see.
Yeah.
Much more similar to all of our peer districts, regional districts, so that there will be some kind of continuity there.
All right, so we don't need an option since it's first rate.
First rate.
Okay. All right, nothing else for me to concern?
Sorry.
No problem. All right, and we're bound to Chief Financial Officer, Secretary Porter of the Management, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Madam President. Board members, I have passed out the presentations. We have pride in you. Board members, it will be out both TVs, so you can see. As we know, in November each year, we have to put out a November forecast. We were meeting with the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee Thursday to get their approval for the recommendation at the meeting in the 258. So we're presenting an actual formal forecast then. But with that, we've had many discussions since I became Treasurer with the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee about our capital plan and how we're using general funds to pay for permanent improvements, basically. And a permanent improvement, just as a reminder, for the board and the community is anything that has a useful life of five years. So with that, you know, you use permanent improvement funds only on items that have a useful life of five years. They can't be used for salaries and benefits. They can only be used as books, balls, pluses, bricks. So those are the kinds of things that we think about with that. But to kind of look at everything, again, if you look at our strategic plan, you know, our main goal is to maintain enhanced fiscal stability, focusing attention on diligence on short and long-term planning. So when we think of short-term planning, we should be thinking of our budget cycle, our appropriations, which we approved back in September. And again, that obviously ties to our long-term planning with regards to the five-year forecast because it's a constant cycle of checking back and forth to make sure that we're thinking about, okay, this is what we're going to spend this year, but how does that impact what we do in the future? As well as there's more options for alternative revenue to maximize our esteemed personnel, facilities, and resources. And we have done that through shared service agreements primarily, as well as the new initiative that we started this year with the new scoreboard with regards to finding advertising revenue to help offset those costs. And we were able to do that this year at the shared board meeting. Third, final goals, we should continue to balance approach towards equitable distribution of resources across the district. When we think of, when I think of other schools, going back to my start back in 2010, this is really, from my perspective, what had shaped me from a financial belief system from our prior CFO, Mr. Wilson. He ingrained this into me. I used it to drive what I was doing as superintendent of current schools. And I take this to do what we're doing now. You know, everything that we have, if I have these five fiscal management beliefs, first and foremost, all decisions need to be made in the context of the five-year forecast. The five-year forecast drives everything that we're doing. You know, whether we add a staff number, we add a new program, we reduce the program, reduce the staff number, there's a trickle-down effect each year in the out year and putting us where we're going to be from a standpoint of, you know, I guess, safety, if you will, from an economic level. Obviously, it's not my forecast, it's our forecast, it's the board's forecast, it's Mr. Heath and his leadership team's forecast. We meet and collaborate on that together. I'm just the tool, so to speak, that puts everything together to present it to the board and the community. But there's lots of communication that goes on with that. And when we talk about things at an administrative level, a lot of times we're talking about what is the impact of that on our forecast? And how does that, you know, how does that project out going forward? We also know that there's management dollars spent attached to every dollar that we spend. You know, and I think that kind of goes to the last one, too. Quality is always cheaper in the long term. You know, when you think about when you're going to purchase something, are you going to purchase the used bus? Are you going to get the new bus? Are you going to have a five-year bus cycle, you know, a 10-year bus cycle that we have? And all that kind of comes into play, right? Because we know if we save on getting something that's a little bit cheaper, we might have to buy it twice rather than once and get a longer term out of that. So when we look at when we're purchasing things, we really kind of keep those two principles together as well. And obviously, when we're here to educate kids, we want to make sure every dollar spent must add value to teach you and learn. And learning extends outside the classroom, as we know. We have a very strong extracurricular program, both athletics and clubs and activities for our students because we know kids that are engaged in those activities are better in classrooms. So, you know, we really try to invest in that, and that has a return for our community as well. And then kind of what we're going to talk a lot about tonight is we have to focus on our major expense areas. We know we're a service industry, so we know the majority of our budget falls into salary benefits. We also have special ed costs, which are costs that a lot of times we can't control because we don't know when or if a student is going to have a disability. And so, you know, it's determined that they do through a team process. Obviously, we talked a lot about this in our five-year capital plan, our facilities, and we have to maintain our facilities. And we've done an excellent job maintaining our facilities across the district. I've worked in a couple of the districts in Lake County that everybody knows. And I'm always impressed at the job our maintenance and the studio staff has done to maintain and keep our facilities. And that goes to this five-year plan, and we really spend a lot of time doing it. So right now, what you see on the screen is a basically a summary, high-level summary of our five-year forecast as I have it today. Could that change prior to November 8th? Yes, it could. Like I said, we're going to present this again to the Facility Commissioner, Citizens Financial Advisory Group Thursday. And sometimes they give us recommendations that we take into consideration and make some adjustments prior to presenting to the full board on the 8th. But what you can see on the screen above us is that every year on the out year, we are deficit spending. This year, we're projecting the deficit spend by about $17.7 million. We've explained that that is because of the fact that we did our transfer from the general fund to our capital improvement.
Sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Wilson.
Sorry.
Yeah, you're good.
Yes.
We didn't say subscribe, man. I said some phones, right? So this year, it looks like we're expending more. Remember, that was because we made the decision to fund this year, next year, and the year after for our capital improvement plan. So you can see in out years, then, we see a reduction in the spend going through about $7.1 million to almost $11 million, almost $18 million. And then in the final year, we're at $22.6 million in deficit spending. What that does, obviously, if we're spending more than we're bringing in, we're going to be taking down our cash balance. And that is the typical levy cycle in Ohio with the way that we fund schools. You know, we have relatively flat revenue, we have an increase in expenses. Obviously, right now, we're seeing higher than typical increase in expenses with inflation rates being, you know, still in the 7% to 8% range. Did do a lot of research on what they're projecting for out years. They're saying that we should normalize going into next year and kind of down closer to 3.5%. And then probably the next three years after that, four years after that, it should be 2.5%. So those are some of the assumptions that I made in our forecast when we didn't have a specific dollar budget because it's zero-based budget. So all in all, we're at that point where, and we knew this when I came in, our expenses have exceeded our revenues and we are deficit spending. So we need to start thinking about ways to continue to tighten our belts, to flatten our expense curve, but also to what is going to be the right time to generate additional revenue. So this is just kind of where we're at now, based on where I've updated since June's forecast with what we have and what we know now.
Do you have a prognostication about the biennial budget and how that's going to look for funding for students?
I think I'm optimistic that when they, it'll be interesting what happens out at OSB. I think we'll learn a lot out there when we're down in Columbus in the next few weeks. But that being said, I think what we're trying to push is that we, and I assumed in the forecast, is that the current funding model of the state would continue into the future. Obviously, you know, we're making a forecast on something that we only know is going to be guaranteed for two years. And we're ending the year this year. We'll get a new budget for the next two years. But everything that I have heard is that we're optimistic that that's going to continue in some shape or form. So those are, I did make that assumption for our state funding fund.
If we get a new governor, that could change that situation, right?
Oh, yeah, correct.
So that's up in the air. So you're assuming that the funding models face a...
Yes. I have no other reason to believe that would not at this current time in the organization and the means that I'm going to. Have you heard anything different?
Everything that I've heard is that everything stays.
Interestingly enough, you all approved me to be able to, and I appreciate, to attend the Georgetown University Financial Certificate coursework. And I did two of those days last week in Cleveland. And it was interesting because we had participants from all over the country, Las Vegas, New Mexico, East Coast, everywhere. So we're having those discussions. And one of the things that the professor was presenting from Georgetown is because of the influx of money that we received from the federal government across the country, she referred to it as the bloodletting, the finances that's going to occur in 2024 approximately because that money has to be spent and run out, and then additional revenue is likely to be there. So, you know, one of the things that we've talked about, you know, how do we continue to tighten our belts to be, continue to be even better stewards of our taxpayer dollars as we move forward? So that we can kind of shift some of these out years as much as we have. And you'll see that towards the end, some of the discussions that Mr. Heath and I have started to have. But it's going, you know, we're seeing a shrinking economy because the Federal Reserve increasing rates. We know that they're going to probably continue that trend of increasing rates, which is obviously going to continue to push up our loan rates, which will kind of slow down the economy. The Federal Reserve is trying to do that softly, as they say. We'll see because we haven't seen much movement. You know, we're seeing, you know, minor reductions in inflation growth. But I just saw something last week from an economist that I follow on social media that said that, you know, the housing market, the pricing is starting to decrease. And they're seeing like double-digit decreases in the amount that priced houses are going for. But it's not like the recession that we saw earlier because that was a bubble, right? This is just because of the fact that, you know, now that the rates are going up, people want, you know, drop the prices because the market's still there. There's not a high, there's a high demand still for housing, but the market is still not saturated like it was back in the day. People have a estimate, we extended ourselves. So, well, we end up in a recession by projection, and everything that areas we will. But we're still a very strong economy, so it's like it's an interesting dynamic economically that we have here. So make some forecasting really fun. So that's a little CFO humor.
Please, do we know with the safety plan that Mr. Porter completed for us, when we will hear on that funding?
Yeah, but Mr. Porter actually asked me about that the other day, if I had heard anything yet, and I have not.
Yeah, neither have I. I instructed him, Phil, and he hasn't heard anything, like you said, he hasn't heard.
So that, I know that's not hoarded as those are enhancements that we could fund with that money. And the other thing was, when we have our meeting in December, do you anticipate knowing whether or not to buy out? Is it go and what, and we have that might have?
When is our December meeting, big reminder, this evening? Can we look? Because we're looking at...
I don't think so. Ultimately, I don't think, but I think we'll have a better idea because it closes on the 9th. We have the seven days, the 16th would be the final day, then they can retract. And then we need some time to be able to evaluate the economics of it, make sure it moves forward. We've seen quite a bit of interest. So we're, yeah, so by 13th, we won't, we'd have a better idea by the organization meeting anyway. And this does not assume, to a good point, and I have this in my assumption that's spelled out, this does not assume that because we haven't finalized yet. So I do.
And the good thing is that will be on the positive side if someday unexpected tips, you know, things in it.
Correct.
So the wash would be hopefully enough to make it at least that.
Correct. So what you see here is our kind of the graphic, which I think is telling, right? It shows you at a kind of a graphic level of where we're at. This is the shortfall of revenue per by year. You can see 2021 was our first year that we did deficit spend, and we have, we continue that trend. I think the interesting thing that I will point out is if you look at how much we deficit spent in 2022, which was my first year as a CFO, and then how much we're going to deficit spend in 2024 projected, that's the same. So it's relatively flat, so to speak, right? That means that within those years, even with inflation and the increases that we were able to negotiate in our contract, but remember, we offset those with the healthcare concessions that we had. And then we worked hard to get the request proposal for medical in our execution that helped us keep our rate, that's 4% increase coming out of 2023, which was about 11% to 14% lower than we would have had if we would have done nothing. And we were expecting, you know, a 6.75%, I think, or a six and a quarter, if I can go back to one of my notes to be specific in the out year. So we even did better than we projected based on some things that we're thinking. So we need to continue to do that. And I have a lot more of that discussion going on, so I don't want to foreshadow too much.
So when was the last time we went for new money?
That would be 2016. I was knocking on doors my last year as the principal of Hunter High School. And we passed the continuing operating levy, a little bit over 51%, I think, to, it was close.
Close to 200.
Yes. That was a continuing operation in 2016. So we've made it six years. The average levy cycle is anywhere is probably closer to three to four years.
Well, I remember when we went for that, we figured we'd be in a like a four- to five-year cycle.
Yeah. So we're at six. And I think we could probably extend, you know, our goal is obviously to extend it as much as possible.
Part of that, I think, it'd been like 12 years.
12 or 13 years, yeah. Because that was the financial crisis in 2000.
Fiscal crisis.
Yeah, 2004. So we made 12 years, which was unheard of at the time.
Yes.
But that was, again, because of the fiscal management principles that Dr. Williams and Mr. Wilson at the time have instituted. We continue to follow here today. Again, I like my graphs. I think it helps people show what's going on. So the blue bar represents our revenue, orange is our expenses, and the green line represents our cash balance. So you can kind of see everything working in unison, how it's working there. What I will share in, is it all right if I stand up? I did speak somehow. What you'll see here, too, though, I point out in these three years, remember these blue bars get shorter because I'm making an assumption, right? I can't, I can't do what? This is the teacher in me. Why, why am I going down in these out years here? What needs to happen? What do we need to pass?
The renewals.
The renewals, right? So this takes off the renewals being there because we can't assume, and these upper lines are the forecast, that it's going to pass. We added it lower, so in this graph, I just want to point out, it looks like we lose revenue. We actually did lose revenue. We're just not assuming that we're guaranteeing that we're going to pass the mercy renewal levy that's up in 2024. So this, this negative cash balance here is inflated as well by the appropriate amounts of the revenue that's taken away. So it's, it's going to be a little bit different than your lower lines in the forecast. But I show it just because it shows multiple things, right? It shows that we are, orange is higher than blue, so we're deficit spending. And it also shows what that's doing to our cash balance in that green line. And it shows how important it is for us to pass those renewal levies prior to the end of calendar year '24 because if we don't, that's, that's what that looks like. So any questions? Are we still good?
Yeah.
So this, I give Mr. Heath all the credit for this because when I went over this presentation with him, he's like, hey, so what is that budget reserve policy again? And I'm like, oh, yeah, I should probably throw a slide in there to remind everybody. So we have, the board has created a policy that is unique. This is a policy that's unique to matters. So asking the question from last week's work session, you know, how will we get this in? We'll just make sure that this gets in. So we have this unique policy, Policy 8.02.1, which is our budget reserve policy that states that we have to have a budget reserve fund. And by law, and we learned this, you know, through the audit process, that you can't have a budget reserve fund that exceeds 5% of your revenue. So 5% of our revenue, or what we have currently now is actually a little bit less than our revenue. It's $5.02 million in our reserve fund that we have. The board has to give authority for us to spend that money. And the board outlines in the policy that that's for one-time expenses, emergencies, and so on and so forth. But anything that we ever want to spend out of that, we have to break to you to get approval. So we don't have access, so to speak, to that $5 million. So it's a rainy day fund, right? The state of Ohio has one. Governor Kecic, I believe, started that for the state. And then Governor Williams continued that. We, they built up a pretty nice little mess. Ours is dictated by law that it can't be more than 5% of our revenue. So if you never exceed a little bit more than $5.2 million. We also stated, Board of Education shall maintain a minimum general fund cash balance of 15% of the annual total general fund expenses, less the amount of the general fund operating reserve fund. I had to read that statement like 100 times when I first became CFO because I thought it was just a way to work. It is confusing, but that's policy. So what it's basically saying is that in total, between the budget reserve and X percent, we have to be 15% of our total current year expenses. So for me, I'm a member's guy. Our appropriations this year was $126 million. 15% of our expenses equals $18.9 million. We have 5.2, so that means we have to maintain a cash balance of 13.7. So between the two, the budget reserve and a cash balance of 15%, the board has a policy that says that our cash balance can't drop below this year, $18.9 million. Again, remember, this number's inflated because we transferred almost $14 million to the O7L. So it's actually less than this because it will be less than this next year because it's based on the year's current expenses. But just keep through the number 13.7 in the back of your mind. Because by, by policy, you said as a board to the community, we won't let our general fund cash balance fall below that. If it, you know, we'd have to, you know, take action to avoid that. So it's kind of our threshold that we set is, is a worst-case scenario that we have to seek additional revenue prior to that by policy, which was based on a white paper research on bioaspirin. And many corporations and the like have similar types of thresholds that they use and engage at. And I think it's a great policy that you guys worked out with Mr. Wilson because it really defines it, right? It's not something, when, you know, when do we have that? This is like, we're going to, we're thinking about this in advance, right? We're, we're always thinking ahead and thinking out. So this discussion started literally at my first Citizens Financial Advisory Committee meeting because we were talking about the money that we transfer out to the capital improvement fund from the general fund. And the capital improvement fund is its own separate fund outside of the general fund. Because our PI levy, which was passed in 1988, generates about $1 million. It's a one-bill levy. It generates about $1 million. But as we know, every year since 1988, we've seen inflationary increases. So because it's a fixed-dollar levy, it can only generate the same amount of money. So what happens is every time we see an increase in profit valuation, there's a corresponding decrease in the effective military. The effective military rate now is below 0.4. So what that means is, is if we were to pass the same one-bill levy in today's dollars, we'd be generating about $2.1 million. Think about it. What you've made, your purchasing power has decreased over time. But we've continued as a district to rely on that $1 million to maintain a $250 million plant. So it's amazing that we've been able to do so. We've done so by using general fund dollars to help us do that. And that's just, and you've heard me say this a lot. Again, this is the science background of me, like I like to see the research. I like to have justification and rationale because I think it's important when you're speaking to the board or the community to say, how do we come up with a logical number of what we should really have? They did research, their architecture program, they published a paper particularly for schools and school facility maintenance. And they said, and I'm oversimplifying because some of the math is actually pretty interesting, like overly complicated. So I was like, how do I just simplify this for us? It's a 2% replacement value. Mr. MacRallo, as you guys know, is our assistant treasurer. Him and I had this discussion. And he's like, well, I would argue that the $250 million doesn't really have replacement value. That's just our total insured value. So I just use total insured value as a holder for us for replacement value because he would argue to build our, if we had to rebuild everything, it's going to cost us more than $250 million. I think we'd all agree, right? I mean, the high school, the middle schools, the seven elementaries, just those buildings alone, we'd probably be up over, over that. But again, I like to keep things relatively simple for us as we try just to have a discussion. So I'm going to use our total insured value as the replacement value, which means that we should equate, we should basically be budgeting $5 million annually just to maintain our facilities. We currently use $1 million. So it's no surprise that we're using general fund money to do that. And there's nothing wrong with that. You know, general fund money, if you think about restrictions, general fund has no restrictions. It just has to be approved by the board. And our policy says, you know, at a, at a general fund level, we're looking for one-digit object. So I think that when we switch objects, if we go from 400, 500 after you guys have approved it, and we switch that this year, you have to give us authority to do that. Permanent improvement money, though, again, is more restricted. It cannot be used for everything. It can only be used for anything that has a useful life of five years. So it's, it's, it's its own kind of like, if you're looking in a circle, it's a circle within a circle that kind of limits what it can be used for. Our current general fund allocation, an average of the length of forecast, is about $3.7 million annually that we are pushing from the general fund to our capital improvement fund. And so we're thus studying about $4.4 million annually just to prevent and make misrepairs and upgrades. Every June, starting a couple of years ago, we presented this to the board to, so that we had a five-year capital plan. And what this slide does is it really just kind of summarizes a couple of things. At the top, it shows you each, the PI revenue that we generate each year. So it's just the 974,000. The middle slide is how much we're spending on facility expenses. This would be our roofs, this would be our window repairs, this would be the various things that we plan out for the out years. The science lab replacements at the high school, they're 50 years old, you know, need to be updated. Our construction manager risk expenses are our other facility upgrades that we're doing because of the need to upgrade facilities, you know, that's going to, that paid for the new softball field. That's going to pay for the new baseball field. It's going to pay for the building of the new entrance and weight room at the stadium and some of the other upgrades that we're doing. The other thing that I wanted to point out tonight is there's many expenses that we have just historically paid for out of the general fund because we only have $1 million to do that, right? And you've heard me say a number of times, and I think it's worth mentioning again tonight, I could spend that $1 million every year on roofs. We have a 10-year roof plan that actually exceeds $1 million. I have about another $500,000 in paving and cement maintenance that we have to do because you've seen it, right? And you walked into the high school, if you walk out in front of the high school prior to last year, you would see the cement was cracked. You know, we were trying to repair it, and we put that in with the new, the new paving that we had out around here. And if you drove in this year, and what is the sound plot at the light compared to the last year? If you didn't have a Hummer last year, you would have probably lost, you would have been replacing a tire and some shocks. This year is nice and smooth. I mean, but we, we, I guess the reason why I bring that up is because I had our group with Mr. MacRallo coming on board to work with Mr. Kolar to create a paving and cement maintenance five-year program, too, because it's a big expense for us. Because we know that every parking lot at some point needs to have sections or lots of it replaced. Again, when you have 11 dwellings, that's just the nature of it, right?
Do you know what the increase in the cost for cement and asphalt and the work that goes to installing it? How much that grew over the last couple of years?
Oh, I'd say, this is a guess. This is, don't call me, I'm on record, clearly. Mr. Vassie, don't check me on this one. The, probably at least 15% to 20%.
That's what I was thinking.
And I say that because I've seen it happen in the roofing industry. Those materials, tar-based materials have gone up drastically, plastics have gone up. So we've seen that. But I don't have the actual figure. And I just know some of our estimates, though, from when we did the plan for the replacement of the drive. As you notice, there were sections that we just didn't do. It was like shared with the board because we couldn't, we saw an increase of almost 50% to 75% of what we thought initially when we did it three years ago. So we know it's gone up. We also have a vehicle plan because we have maintenance vans and pickup trucks for plowing. We also have a vehicle plan, because we have maintenance vans and pickup trucks for plowing and other cars that we have in the district that we have to maintain. So we have a five-year cycle for that. All that's being subsidized right now at the general fund. We buy five buses every year to help maintain our fleet. So that, again, we don't want all of our buses to go out at one time. So we, we go through and cycle them out, because you don't want, you know, year 13, all your buses to be up, because that's a huge expense. So you call up the plan. Our technology plan that Mr. Lynch and his team present to the board every year, as well as our furniture plan that we have. And like I said, I added, based on some of our numbers and our analysis, that we did some additional monies that we would, that we don't even have budgeted right now, that we would need for cement paving, if we were going to do it right, to maintain and have a regular cycle.
Does the tech include the auction and used equipment?
It does not include the revenue for that.
I know it's small, but it...
Yeah, so then, we do, we do directly, and the revenue assumptions have it in there. It's built in, but it's not considered in this specifically. You'll see it, I think, in a later slide. So you can see our total potential PI expenses annually, on average, are about $6.5 million. But again, remember, five of that's for plant, plant maintenance. And then the other million and a half is because of those other things that we could spend out of PI funds. So just as an FYI, those are things that relate to, you know, that's, that's, those aren't education, those are things that are corporate education, right? When you even get the kids to school, they got to have a roof over their head, and they have to have a building that's well-kept. So, you know. So what's the solution? So the board asked me last year to come up with some scenarios and solutions to run, and what would be the impact? And how does that kind of all trickle out? So I ran three scenarios. I ran three levy scenarios. If you were to ask for a 1.5 mil levy strictly for permanent improvements, a 2.0 mil permanent levy, and a 2.5 mil permanent levy. As basis for discussion, obviously, we could say 2.3. We could say whatever we wanted, but I wanted to give a range and kind of make a recommendation and let the board digest that to kind of go forward. As well as show you and the community what that does to those other expense areas that I showed, and then how that impacts the five-year forecast moving out, and what could that do to a need for general operating levy money later on? Because this does not solve the fact that at some point, we're still going to need general operating levy money. Because again, if we get a PI levy, that is only going to be used for specific things, as I just shown. And we will need a general operating levy to cover salaries and benefits, which equates for 78% of our budget. So all of this information is just a summation of everything that I showed you on the last slide. The PI revenue is what we know it always to be. If we were to pass a $1.4 million levy for permanent improvements prior to November 23, then we could collect in the spring collection of '24, which remember is the second half collection of the fiscal year, which is always confusing, right? Because it's the first collection of the calendar year, second half collection of the fiscal year. So that's why you only see $1.7 million revenue generated in fiscal year '24, because we'd only see partial collection. And then you see the full collection coming on in fiscal year '25 and going forward. So that would increase our permanent improvement fund to a total of $4.3 million a year. So we know in our five-year capital plan how much money that we're spending each year. We have that. We have that budgeted already, we've already done that. So when you compare the 4.3 to these values, and we start collecting in '24, and we've already transferred money to the capital improvement fund. Remember, we did $14 million basically this year. I can transfer some of that money back to the general fund, because now we have money coming in at a greater rate. Again, that's why we set up the capital improvement fund. Because if you put money into the permanent improvement fund, it can never come back out by law. We set up the capital fund in the event that we ever had a PI levy that increased, you could then transfer money back. So what you'll see up here is when we pass the levy, I can transfer back $5 million of the $14 million that we just transferred, going back in the general fund revenue. So the revenue for that year is going to go up by $5 million in the general fund. So you're going to see a spike in general fund revenue for one year, because we're putting the money back in, because inherently we reduce the expenses by increasing the permanent improvement. Well, if we have 4.3 in my costs for these two areas, it's 3.8. I have $466,000 of permanent improvement money that I can do something else with. Again, here, I have 300, or 335,000. You'll notice that this lever 27, I still don't have enough, so we'd have to send $184,000 from the general fund to either an O7O or a PI fund. This money then can be used, and I just chose in this case to make it simple, this expenses for buses here and here by the appropriate amount. So again, we're able to put money back into the general fund at $5 million, cover the costs for the CMR projects and our facility upgrades that we're doing, and repairs, roofs, windows, classrooms that we talked about. As well as reduce the expense of the general fund of 466 and 335,000, and drastically reduce how much we have to transfer this year 27, as we're assuming, you know, it's almost like $4 million in this year's forecast for 27. Does that logic make sense? So you can see it's not enough. What it does to your forecast is now, we're only deficit spending by $2 million here, because again, we generated $5 million in revenue that we put back in, and we reduced some expenses, and then we reduced expenses in all the out-years. So we're better off, from a financial perspective, with a 1.5 million levy. So I should be careful internally, because it's not enough. It's just, how much do you want to have for spending with regards to permanent improvements?
Bill, how much would that be on a $100,000 house, like, for the...
Can I show you at the end?
Oh, yeah.
I have that.
I didn't look ahead.
No, no, good, appreciate it. But I have that, yeah, yeah, I have that. I have that all for you, yeah. Because that's part of the discussion, to consideration, 100%.
What I like about it is that it proportions tax collected more clearly for how it's being used. Because I think our community takes pride in the facilities that we provide. They share them with us in lots of cases, whether it's, you know, city functions or teams using fields and so on. I, I think, rather than having it just come out of the general fund, it lets you see more clearly how it's being used.
It's tangible, right? You can, well, you can always see it, but you can...
Yeah.
I can, I can bring it in, I can show you, I can go show you the roof, but I will see the roof, right? But you can, you can definitely, it's definitely tangible. So I have this in here, again, if you wanted to flip back to the first one, you can see the difference, it puts us in a much better position. And I have a slide that will summarize them all together, just so you can see everything as one. I just try to keep things logical. Remember, this is one of my favorite slides, because it talks to us about, okay, where we're at with regards to the need for a levy. And it kind of relates your revenue shortfall to your cash balance. And because we're, we, we, our, transmit so much money, we're actually in the red this year, but it's, again, it's a one-time transfer, so we know it's not really where we're at. And then if we did pass the 1.5 mil levy, that puts us almost in the green. And you can see it pushes out the likelihood of when that levy would need to occur for general operating dollars. The longer you wait, though, remember, the more that the levy's going to have to be. So there is, there is the tiny piece of that that comes into play. This slide is more so in here, because it shows a summary, and it does go beyond the five-year forecast. And obviously, these are not drastic. I mean, anything beyond years one and two, I always say, are, are kind of, you know, you never know where it's going to land on. So these aren't very reliable, and they give a picture, right? They tell a story for us to kind of consider. The reason why this slide is on here, for you guys and for us, because this is what's most important. It says, Levy Millage Needs Estimator. So if you waited until 2025, based on what we just had, to be able to cover the deficit that we have, we're looking at a levy of 8.8 to 7.7 mils. If you have it in 2024, it's between 5.7 and 7.74. I'm going to be honest, I don't want to be this guy. That's, that's going to be a tough sell to anybody, in good times. I've tried to pass a 6.9 million levy before. Put on 20 pounds and I lost. It wasn't a good month. Two mils. So this is, again, the same information. Now it's assuming a 2.0 mil permanent improvement levy. Generates $5.4 million in total with the current PI levy that we have. Key feature here is now we're transferring about $1.7 million more back to the general fund. And you can see that the amount of money that we have to offset other permanent improvement expenses to the right is more. So in '25, we could purchase all of our buses out of the permanent improvement levy and about $1 million worth of technology. All the buses in '26, all the buses in '27, and part of the technologies in '26 and '27 respectively. So that allows us to, you know, kind of cross this off the board and, you know, put a decent dent into those based on our current plan that we have. Again, the average spend per year is still $6.5 million, generating about $5.4, so about $1.1 million less than all the permanent improvements that we can have. And again, kind of echoing the comment we talked about just before, is the collective group. The PI levy allows you to purchase specific things. Yep.
Should it say new PI 2 mils additional?
It should, I apologize. Yeah. Yeah, I apologize. I switched it, it's very competent, I switched to the next slide. So what that does to the five-year forecast, because we reduce those other expenses in the buses and technology, and we transferred back the $6.7 million worth of revenue, it improves our out-years a little bit more. Still, that's spending the entire time, just, you know, not as, not as bad. And again, that assumes all of our current assumptions stay the same. Which I'm going to tell you by the end that they can't. Hey, where are you reading? Here too. Because we're almost, we're almost even. $500,000 on a $110 million budget is the easiest thing to cut. You could find, you could find, I can find her, I can find her. Mr. Heath can find her. Miss Estes can find $500,000. Still have, you know, 8.3 and 7.32 levy needs in '25. You know, but now, you know, you're down a little bit closer. But again, we're still deficit spending, because our expenses technically change. 2.5 mils. Again, Mrs. Meyer, that should say 2.5 in that second box. Mr. Heath and Mr. Beckerala, who are my editors, did not catch that. I'm so sorry. I should send it to you first. So you can see now we're at $6.5 million, generating about permanent improvement dollars, which is what we have here. That's how I ended up at 2.5, I'll work my way back. It's not, I'm not a magician, it's just simple math. That allows us to transfer $8.3 million back to the general fund. It covers all of our expenses, as well as leave some additional money there in the account in the event that an emergency happens. Because, let's be honest, a boiler to go, a roof that we were hoping to push off to year 10, needs to be replaced sooner. Those types of things can happen. It gives, gives the district a cushion to, to have that. And there's things still that we purchase in building, in business operations out of the general fund that could be even, that are even on this list. So... Look at that, year 2024, we're at deficit spending. But we are in all the out-years.
So just to clarify something, Bill, on this screen here.
Yep.
The way I'm interested in this screen on each scenario you gave us is, we're taking care of our permanent improvements, we're good for a year, but we're still going to need the general...
Yes, yes.
So we can take your revenue.
Correct, yeah.
We're just getting our PI...
We're getting the PI, or reducing expenses that could be taken out of PI revenues, which then has helped reduce the expenses overall in our general fund.
Because when I look at '24, we look good. And then '25, '26, '27, look a little better, but we're still bad. And it's telling you, we're still going to need another levy.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's, yeah, this is just, this is kind of like doing two things at once, right? There's really big things that we have to do. You know, we have to pass the emergency levy renewal. We can either do a PI and a general fund, or we can just do a general fund and continue to spend out of the general fund like we have it. That's not my recommendation. I've been clear on that since I started. The Citizens Financial Committee's been clear on that. They think that we should have specific monies for specific things, because that's, those, what those dollars can be used for. There's no mistake that that's from a taxpayer standpoint, that's what I'm spending this money on, is for these things that the district has communicated out. And we update that every year. So it's, and our district is never, it should never be, if you're informed and you come to the meetings. So you've all heard me, because I know a lot of the faces that are here, we've said this multiple times since I started, that these are, you know, we have this capital improvement plan. We've, we've budgeted it out. We have a vehicle replacement plan. We have a bus replacement plan. We have a plan for technology, we have a plan for furniture, and we now have added a plan for paving and cement. But when 78% of your budget salary and benefits, you're just kicking the can down the road, so to speak.
Bill, can I mention one thing to you? Correct me if I'm wrong on this too, but if you go back to that $13.7 million figure that you were talking about, is, is this that, that dollar figure that we're looking at in year 2024?
Because, yeah, because we still have, we still have the budget reserve on top of that too.
And I believe that's the scenario that actually has that all the way through that...
Yeah.
...of a year.
And our budgets, yeah, I mean, $13 million is a lot of money. I'm not dismissing that. But when you're spending $100 to $13 million a year, that doesn't last long, right? Like, if you're, and you're only bringing in $107 million, you're, that's gone in two years. And if you think about it, to reduce by a million dollars, that's roughly 10 teachers. That's roughly, conservatively, 20 classified staff. I mean, that, that's, 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 that's a lot, you know, that's, that's a lot of people. That's, you're starting to feel that in the classroom, or whether, or if, you know, we can't get rid of bus drivers.
If they change the class size.
Oh, we could. I mean, I just don't appreciate it. You can, you can get rid of bus drivers, if your level of service would be the same, right? You have to change the level of service. Because, so, you know, everything, you know, there's an impact. There's, there's a trigger down there. My job is to share the numbers. His job is to determine what those should be with, obviously, that's not just his job, but we do that together. But there's, there is a, there is a choice, right? There's a varied choice to every dollar that we spend and don't spend, and what the impact of that is.
Bill, these numbers are not including what Jenny had mentioned earlier, right? With the possible buyout.
Correct, yeah.
So, because that could change... So, because that could change things as well.
Correct.
I mean, not to time, but, okay, no change in stamping. And this isn't including any kind of projections of decrease in enrollment? Because they don't slightly change it over the years, or is it?
It does include, it does include decreases enrollment, but it does not include, this is a discussion I needed to have with you tonight. We needed to have with you tonight? Because we need direction on how you want us to proceed, and the out years do. Because we can, you know, that, that's kind of what we need to do, right? I mean, it's, because if you say, hey, yeah.
That's no change.
Yeah, so we need to, we need, that's part of that discussion too. Good points.
And the original 1988 levy remains at the force. We'd be adding PI collections on top of the new money.
Correct.
Just so that it's not a replacement.
It's not a replacement, no. That money's still there, still being collected, we're adding on to it, yes. Good question. Again, kicking the can down the road helps us reduce expenses early on. We're still, still in that spot. Lowers those levy amounts, which should make sense, right? Because you're, you're adding additional revenue in a PI fund to reduce expenses correspondingly. So really, you're not, it's the same, right? You can, you could ask for 8.8 mils, and if you pass great, then you don't need a 2.0, you know, a 1.5 mil levy in PI. You're just, you're funneling the money to specific pools, so to speak, so they can only be used for specific things. So I told you, this is kind of summarizing everything together. So the blue line here is our current trajectory as is. If we go to a 1.5, a 2, or 2.5, that's our cash balance. So you can see how the cash balance improves in the out years if we were to, you know, to do those scenarios that I said. Because using that extra money to reduce buses, buses and technology, or reduce everything. So that's how our cash balance is extended in the general fund in the out years. There's also, this graph shows how expenses change based on those same assumptions. So this is just a visual of all the spreadsheets that it showed you collectively together. So you can see, because we start collecting in '24, full collection in '25, '26, and '27. Obviously, the red is now the 2.5. The black is the 2, the 1.5, and then adds it. You can see here, our expenses are 132 million in '27. If we do a 2.5 mil levy, they're at 126. Because that's again, we're taking buses, we're taking technology, we're taking all those expenses and putting them into the PI fund. Not spending any different, just spending it from a different fund. Just wanted to be clear. Your numbers person, to go with those graphs, yours, the cash balance, the dollar marks, they go with it. So we go from being a negative cash balance in our current model to being a 33 million dollar cash balance if we do the 2.5 mils.
This seems like a perfect companion to the 2018, right? Sizing of the district where we shuffled our zones for the elementary schools and closed some buildings so that we didn't have excess space that we were, you know, not filling as efficiently as possible. Closing the middle school and transitioning that to the elementary. So I really appreciate this.
Oh, my next slide is, this is kind of like Jack and I. This is mutual. Oh, here it is. I didn't know that was really the next one I could. But I knew you were asking a question, see?
You do.
We were here. So the question is always, what's this going to cost the taxpayer? It is a, this is the right question, right? For, we do it on a 100,000 dollar home, assuming that people can do the math. If I live in a 300,000 dollar home, I would just multiply this number here by three. So these are your annual costs. These would be your monthly costs per 100,000. So if we passed a 2.5 mil levy, and I lived in a 200,000 dollar home, I'm roughly paying, what, 160, 175?
Now, Bill, if you say 200,000 dollar home, is that the tax assessment?
No, that is the actual market value.
Market value.
I've done the math for you. So I did the 35% multiplied by the 2.5 divided by the 1,000. Mr. Masichek, good math, thank you. We're neighbors.
And friends, and friends.
So there's a, again, there's a cost to the community to do this. So if the average home is 300,000 dollars in the, in the area, you're, you're looking at, you know, 250, 60, or 260 dollars a year. But a lot of people, if we were surveying them, they know that this money's going to specific tangible items that it's, it's different than a general fund operating level. My suggestion would be, if we do this, we would do it for five years. We wouldn't go right out and ask for it to be permanent or continuous. We would want to show the community that we can, we're gonna continue to be the stewards that we have been always with their money, earn their trust. Permanent improvement levy could be anywhere from five to 10 to permanent, continuous. And then maybe after one or two tries, you can go to 10 years, and then ultimately you can look at it continuous because, you know, our needs of maintaining our buildings aren't going to change. I hope we can, you know, but at some point, if we consolidate buildings, or, you know, if we move on, we can reduce that and we go to new, to new, uh, new buildings. And I'm not suggesting we build new buildings, but, I mean, our summer buildings are 50, 60, 70 years old. We've maintained them, so we're gonna, you know, we're gonna continue to have them. But at some point, if we wanted to build another elementary school that was larger combined two or three, because there's efficiencies in size, you wouldn't necessarily need this PI levy to be at this amount. You could reduce that.
Did the citizens' financial committee, have they looked at this, or you're gonna be sharing that?
I'm gonna share that with them on Thursday.
Joe, would it be helpful, just every time there's a levy up, people look at that and say, why, I have a 250,000 dollar home. But those who have to be appraised on it. So they get confused over millage and what they're paying taxes on. So you listed it as the market value. What they suppose that house is worth today, really? And how often do people get a tax break rate?
Every three years.
Three years. So that, that stays constant. So are we better off comparing it to the appraised value? Or should we tell them both? They need to understand market value versus.
To me, it just seems, if I know I can sell my house for 300,000 dollars, it's easier for me just to go, okay, hey, this pays three, that's roughly within my taxes. Because you're not gonna be, you're probably not gonna be low. If you start getting into assessed value, appraised value, I'm one of the guys that I'm explaining I'm losing. And that's, that's my motto. You know, and I think, and it's not to deceive. I know sometimes people say it's to deceive, it's not really to deceive because a lot of people live month-to-month budget. That's why I put the month-to-month budget number in there. You know, they, that's how they, they want to know what it's gonna cost them. How much am I gonna not be able to spend now because you just raised my taxes? And for me, 100,000 dollars is easy because if, I think most people can do the math, right? If I live in a 200 or 800,000 dollar home, I can just multiply by two or eight. It, but it's always, it's, what you're saying is, yes, it's always a question that has to be discussed. And to me, it's just easier for me to have this discussion as I'm trying to explain it from my role. So we have to, I guess we don't have to do something, but we have to do something. My recommendation would be not to do anything. So we have levy actions and timelines. So on the far right, you have your primary schedule for this coming year, calendar year. Uh, we have a primary election in May, August special election. I don't recommend us going on the ballot in August. Uh, but this graphic that I had has it there. And then the general election in November.
If we go with a specialist, don't you bear the full cost?
Yes, he bears the full cost, but it just, having sat in the super Tennessee, it just seems like you're, people always assume that we're trying to sneak it on. They, sometimes they, but it's not necessarily, I'm not saying that's why it happens in August. The issue that we have is we have to pass it before they have the calendar year. So we wanted some, you know, a lot of times you just want to get it on and get it passed, and you want to use every opportunity that you have, because if you don't, then you're having to cut. I typically try to stick to, recommend that we stick to the spring and this, the fall. But if you don't pass by November, remember, you lose the whole year of collections. Calendar.
How many tries do you get? So that's it?
Uh, for the emergency levy?
For the renewal.
For the renewal, we have four. Well, yes, six, because you could use the August. But you have, we can start in the spring of, of May, May of 2023. So with that, we have to have the discussion on, do we want to keep it as an emergency levy? Which means it can only be passed for five or 10 years. We're coming off a 10-year expiration now. It's from 2013. Expires in calendar year 2024. Do we want to make it a substitute levy, which is another fixed-dollar levy? Substitute levies can be for one, five, 10, continuous. We've passed this emergency renewal a number of times prior to. Either way, it's not a new tax, it is a renewal. The difference between an emergency and substitute, besides the timeframe, and there's something to be said about voter fatigue. So it is a consideration. But the difference between emergency and substitute is also a substitute levy ratchets up. And what I mean by ratchets up is when you have new construction, that new construction gets added to the levy, so it collects more. An emergency levy, you collect more for that year, and then it ratchets back down to the same dollar amount, because it's a fixed-dollar amount. So the fixed-dollar amount stays the same. So we always collect, let's say it's a 2 million dollar emergency levy. It would be 2 million dollars for our, a new construction levy. You know, you get added on, the assessed valuation at 35% of the effective millage rate at that time, that gets added on, so it has a slight increase.
So new construction can add on?
For substitute, for substitute levies, yeah.
For a substitute levy for the new construction during the whole week at that time?
Yep. So you see growth. So there's a, and the reason why I like that is because our, as we all know, our revenue's flat, we don't, we don't see growth. The city benefits from income tax. Right? Income tax is a, there's growth to it. People make more money, and the city gets more income tax. I'm not suggesting that we have an income tax, I'm just saying that there's growth built into it. Ours, we don't see, it's relatively flat. The only time that we've seen more money is we saw a little bit of bump this year, right? Because we saw the reappraisals came in high. But we don't see all of that, we only see it on the inside village. Because by Household 920, the effective rates of the rest of the levies drop correspondingly. And that's to protect the taxpayer from huge inflationary increases like we just saw. But a lot of times people say, oh my God, I got a 16% increase, now my taxes are gonna go up by, you know, corresponding value. But it's not necessarily the case.
It seems like a 2004 emergency levy isn't described appropriately in 2022. You know, what was an emergency that grew out of that era? You know, we've gotten a lot of things in order.
Yeah, the term emergency, just to clarify, is a misnomer.
Yeah.
And it does, you're not really, you're not really passing. One of the reasons is because you have an emergency, but it's also because you're trying to avoid an operating deficit. And there is an advantage to fixed-dollar levies like a substitute emergency levy because of the fact that they don't count towards your outside village. So what that means is, there's the 20 mil floor. Millage rate can't fall below 20 mils. If it does, it automatically ratchets back up. This is the first time in many years that mentors can, relevant, and we're not really super close, but we're relatively close. We're, we're closer than we've ever been, so it could be something we should consider because you do see growth on that. But it's unvoted, so there's, there's a, there's a potential consequence for that as well.
But a substitute levy might be a better description for our need, does that make sense?
It does, but it, yeah, and it also has growth with the new construction, and it also allows us to potentially seek continuous, the money for a continuous amount of time. We just, we need that money, it's not, I mean, that's not gonna change. You saw what happens if we don't pass that.
And if we have a family who's moved to the community, has a new home that's been built, and they have children who are attending the schools, you know, we're accommodating the needs of those children and educating them accordingly. So it makes sense that that would be reflected in the way we're asking the community to support our schools.
Even many of the developments going in right now that are very family oriented, so I'd really like the substitute levy to allow for that. Because there, there are plans that could take 15 years to develop these communities that are being built. It would give us an opportunity to.
Either way, my recommendation to the board is we do it for another 10 years, regardless whether you call it emergency levy or substitute levy. You know, at least we're doing it for 10 years, and we're considering if we're gonna substitute continuous. It, it's, it's a 10-year levy now, I don't know why we would change, change that.
If you could say we would compare that with a PI levy so that the voters would come to consider our request one time.
Correct. Yeah, my recommendation too, going on a PI levy needs is if you do it, you would do it at the same time. So we're, we're communicating one message to our voters about the two levies.
Because there's a considerable amount of cost in time that we all invest in the process of asking, yes, going on the ballot. It's, it's considerable. And that's not, that we have to raise that money separately to fund that? That's not coming from?
We don't raise, this is clear.
Well, I'm sorry. The committee.
Committee raises, there's a lot of committees that raises. There's no, no tax dollars are spent on the social level.
That was my point, I just said, you know, we have a committee that we ask citizens to assist with warming and go from there, so.
And voter fatigue.
Voter fatigue is, yeah, that's the approximately, I understand.
We'll, we'll be asking them for a general levy, like?
See, that's, this is why I have this on here. It's like, we have to, it has to be part of the message. We have to communicate everything transparently and with a timeline, in my vision. You have to show everybody what, what's going to happen. Because we can't say, hey, you need to pass this emergency or substitute levy. We're gonna ask you to increase your taxes for a permanent crew levy, and it's gonna be used for this, and to give the presumption that that's gonna solve all the world's ills. Because it's not. It, it won't. Get that, play that on the channel. Like it's not gonna solve the world's ills. We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to ask for general operating levy, even if we cut, which I'm going to suggest that we do. You're still gonna need general operating levy money. So we should tell the story as the story is. Hey, this is what we're going to do. We need to pass this emergency levy, we need just for us, it's not a tax increase. It's not a new tax. We need this PI money because here's why. This is what it's going to get, this is what it's gonna pay for, this is what it's going to do. It's going to push off the need for a general fund operating levy for, till this point. And then we are going to do this so that we can put the levy on at this. And we have to say it loud and proud and 100 million times, because even then, people are not gonna remember that we said that when we put the general operating levy on. It's just because, it's, because not everyone, it's just, not everyone's as connected as the people are in this room. It's just the way it is, right? We have to, we have to communicate it, it has to be the mantra. That's why I've been saying this since I started last November. It's not going to change.
Phil, um, logistically, I'm like, let's say on the ballot, is it all in one, like?
No, it'd be two, it'd be two issues.
So you could say if somebody was like, I'm okay with renewal, but I don't want additional plans?
Yep, 100%. Yep. They won't be combined. That's a great question. They would be two issues. Obviously, we don't know the issues until we get it approved by the, uh, the board of elections. But you can choose to vote for the PI and not the renewal, or you vote for the renewal and not the PI, or you can choose to vote for, or both?
And then?
Well, four of them.
If it was switched to a substitute levy, does, like on the ballot, does it not say renewal then there? Or like, does it say, emergency levy on the ballot, it would say renewal?
I have, I don't know that.
I'm just wondering, because if somebody goes and they're not knowing, if they see renewal, it's like, oh, okay, it's a renewal, you know, but if they see substitute levy, they're like, oh gosh, that's a good one, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be important in the messaging to know your taxes.
Yeah.
No increase. Yeah.
No, no taxes increases.
It's no new taxes. Can't say any tax increases because depending upon the way that they have the era, credit shows fall on everything else, your taxes theoretically could go up.
Would it make sense to?
Not because of the levy, just because everything else is happening, because the levy's still collecting the same dollar amount. That's, so it's not a new tax.
Would it make sense to consider a 2.5 mil permanent improvement levy? Because we know that that is not exceeding the PI costs. And that would then allow us to push out a general operating levy a bit longer? Or is it negligible?
You want to see?
Yeah.
So I ran a couple scenarios. Because my recommendation is the 2.5 mil levy for PI. Unless the board makes the decision not to do what we've agreed to do previously, which is fine, we can do that, but if we're going to have a five-year plan for everything, we need to be able to fund it. So unless we're going to change that plan, to me, it seems unwise to not have the revenue to fund that. It's just, it's not a good business model, right? Like, I wouldn't run a business that way. I wouldn't run the school district that way. That being said, as I said, there's still a need for general operating dollars. I think, anything above five is unwise. I think the lower we can, you know, in that four to five range is probably the, would be a recommendation that I would make to the board. I have five on here because I wanted to show you something. Five doesn't do it in 2024. And this is our best-case scenario. Sorry, with the best. It gets no better from here. It's a lot of.
That was going to be my question. We're not out of the deficit.
No, we're still deficit spending. So this assumes, so this assumes two things, right? Let's just be clear. It assumes we're going to pass in '23, by November of '23, a 2.5 mil PI levy. And it also assumes that we're going to pass in '24 a 5.0 mil operating levy. New one. Within a year of each other. Again, so this is what I'm saying. Like you have to, like it has to be communicated. I have dollars.
The renewal also was approved or substituted, whatever.
Well, yeah, that, that, that's, that's, that's a number, right? Like that has to happen.
Yeah.
The renewal has to pass. The rest of this stuff doesn't, I mean, if it doesn't pass, we have issues. That renewal doesn't pass. You're going to, yeah, you're in a crisis again. Because that was what saved us from the last crisis. So that's what that levy is. That's, that's the last crisis money that lasted 12 years before you needed to add additional level. Well, I don't want to go on '24, Bill. That seems awfully close to the PI levy you just sold the, okay, that's fine, Mr. Tuttle. I'll pass at 5 mil in '26. Well, or 10, 25, remember, so that collects, because it's in November of '25 at the latest. Doesn't collect until the first half of '26, doesn't collect full money until '27. Right? So you can kind of see, okay, we could, we could kick, we could do that. But we're still deficit spending, so we're going to be on the levy again in three years, most likely, or four years. At the most. We've been hap, so, but we create, so let's think about this in 20, if I pass in '25, last new money was in '16, that's nine years, 12 years, 21 years, so we're in about what, 10 and a half year levy cycle? That's pretty darn good for a district our size. But doing it this way, we're probably going to be, we're going to be drastically sooner than that. Again, assuming that we can keep everything the same. If you do six mils in '26, or 26 mils in '25, excuse me, collecting half in '26, not only are you looking for a new CFO, you still will be in that situation.
Don't fight with it, but how much of twice that?
Because that's when we cut the full amount. So this is right here. So it's 14 point, it's a 14, it covers 14 million dollars. I really don't want to have to try to convince people that the six mil levy is the answer.
Maybe it's a little bit outside the average approval.
Yeah, the sweet spot is that four to five. I mean, it really is. I mean, you look at passage rates, and you look at the stats, and you look at the statistics. Presidential elections are a good time to do it too, contrary to popular belief. Voter turnout is important. You want everybody to have a vote. Again, but we can't wait until November because here's the issue. If we don't pass it in November, now we're throwing, we're now, we, we are forced to wait over here. Or add, increase the, the amount that you need, or drastically decrease, right? There's always, I shouldn't just say increase. There's, there's, there's a decrease ahead of this. And there's, regardless, there's a decrease ahead of it. Because I'm going to go back. Five mils in '24 doesn't do it. If we keep our spending the same way, we cannot. We have to flatten our expense curve. And I would argue, because if we want at least to get six years out of the levies by point, we have to, we have to be about $115 million in some of these out years. So we have to cut $2 million a year of the out years to do that somehow. Because we, it's the right thing to do. We owe it to the taxpayer, and we need to stretch that money out as much as we can. The way, the tricky piece is, we have to do it without impacting student success and safety. Right? There's, there's decisions, there's management decisions to every dollar that's spent or not spent. So we can't sacrifice student success and safety. We're here to educate. Just as a reminder, this is how we spend our money. 72%, again, that's a little bit deflated because of the transfers out that we have this year. So it's probably closer to 75, 76% of our money spent on salary and benefits. The other big area, this is the transfer out completed. Kind of ignore this for now. Our other two major areas are purchase services and supplies. You cannot solve the issue of purchase services and supplies alone. Nor should we solve the issue completely in the background noise. Recommendations, I know his decision together with me, but you know, I can't keep my fingers to myself. Um, staffing. Anytime you have an alligator chart in your staffing world, it's not necessarily a good sign. Here's the alligator. His mouth is open. But why do we have an alligator chart right now?
Because we're spending more than we're earning.
Uh, well, yes, but that's not why we have an alligator chart here. What did we do? In 2021, to keep the schools open at the elementary level. Reduced the class sizes drastically. We added staff. What else happened in, during COVID? Enrollment dropped. So we had a decreasing enrollment and increasing staffing, so staffing went up, enrollment went down. Now we have an alligator's mouth that's open, right? Mrs. Estes will tell you that I say that we're still chunky in our staffing world. I don't like to use the word fat. Discrimatory. I like to say chunky. Means we still need to right-size. This stat in '21, the data in my chart didn't come out in '22 yet, hasn't been released to the state, to my analytics company. That is not as wide last year, and it's, it'll be, it's a little less wide this year. But we have to, we, our district has prided itself since, and I can say this from experience, since 2010 when I came in, or 11, with Dr. Hoynes, and then we did it with Matt. I know Bill's done it. Craig and I are going to do it. We've had the discussions as we get out of the pandemic. You can see, we've actually exceeded it. As enrollment's declined, we've actually, our staffing's actually went down at a greater rate than it did. And we learned that from the fiscal crisis in 2004 when we had, not because of a pandemic. This was happening because of just poor decision-making on adding staff when we had decreasing enrollment back in 2004. You have to look at the data, right? You have, I mean, you have to, like, if we do that, like, that's something we do. That's not the norm, and that was created by the pandemic so that we could keep elementary schools open four days a week and have lower class sizes in the other areas so that we could, you know, at the time, keep classes open. We've started to shrink them, right? We, every year we've reduced staffing. We still, and, you know, once I get the updated one for 20, that has last year's numbers, and I'll share it with you in the community as just a follow-up. Because it, this is exaggerated, because this was, this was the year. Right? So we have to continue to right-size the district. We have to look at our class size numbers. There's research that will say once you get above 17 kids in a class, the impact on instruction is negligible. I say that as your CFO, and I say that as your, as a, as an educational leader. So we have to have those discussions. The other thing that we need to consider, this is a, I hurt some people's eyes, but for me, this makes sense. This is a stack bar graph for our 500s and our 600s. So 500s are supplies, 600s are, are capital outlay money. Not to be confused with our 070 capital improvement fund. These are purchases that cost more than $5,000. But remember when I got hired, you guys approved a policy in November that said we would switch that threshold from 500 to 5,000? So the reason why I put that together, because you have to look at them as a collective group. Because if you look at any one individual, it's misrepresented because we switched how we classified things in the midst. What I would tell you is that pre-COVID, we were at about, let's say, 5.4, 5.5 million dollars for our 600s and 500s. We had to spend a lot, more so than usual for cleaning supplies and multitude of other things that we needed to keep the schools open. We've, we have zero-based budget in our departments, which means that our departments, curriculum, HR, everyone that is on the administrative team has to provide a budget each year. We don't just, inflationary increases. We don't just say, because you had 200 grand last year, we're going to give 2% more. So you're going to have $204,000. We don't do that. We say, what's your budget going to be for this year? What are you spending it on? What, you know, why, and then that goes to Mr. Heath, goes to the strategic plan. So in a lot of cases, we, these numbers that we're assuming in the out years are because that's what the, the department heads have given me. I always go back and say, hey, look, what you're giving me doesn't align to what you've spent in the past. So I get them to sharpen their pencil, sharpen their pencil, sharpen their pencil, but on some level, you could, you're just forecasting, so there's only so much pencil sharpening you can do on your out years. I would argue with Mr. Heath, and he agrees, I guess it's not really argued. I would engage in professional discourse with our superintendent to say that we probably could do some savings on some of those out years by really questioning some of the things that we're spending on for 500s and 600s. So let's say we get 500 grand here each year. We get some savings from staffing. We get some savings from the retirement center. And I'm going to show you one more slide where I think we can get some savings, and I think we could probably tighten our belts by about $2 million a year. What that is exactly yet, we don't know. We still need to figure out. But it can happen. But the reason why I show you this, because it's just cool. This is the nerd in me. Everything I did showed you, the PI levy with changing the expenses and everything else, and taking the buses and the technology, everything out. Like if you pass the 2.5 mil levy, this is what your chart looks like in your out years. So that's just because. So this is interesting because in the state funding model, you've heard me say this before. We used to get money deducted from our state foundation for payments to kids to going to other schools. They used to reduce the funding. Now you get, you get paid based on where the kid actually sits, buds and seats. So we dropped by 1.5 million dollars, not because of anything that we did here, just that the expense went away. Yet we're still projecting, and a lot of this comes down to, um, our technical services and our tuition subsidies, so special education, some other things that we have, and we're just projecting where we're at. But those are things that we can't control. If a student moves in who has an IEP, or students identify as a student who needs an IEP, and their least restrictive environment is in the school setting, but they need to have an occupational aid, they need to have a nurse, they need to have a one-on-one, or they need to be sent to cares to meet their needs so we can educate that student. We can't control that cost. We've, we've, we've created, you know, cares to help us control costs, so we've, you know, in some respect, we've done creative things to do that. Um, but, you know, we are a public school. We have to educate everybody, and we have to educate them as their needs. So, again, I think there's probably some savings here that will be realized as we kind of go through the process. And remember, every board meeting, I'm trending my report against what we forecasted. So you get an update on this every month. When I show revenue's trending higher and expenses are trending lower, it's, it's back to the forecasted amount. So again, you're getting that information monthly to gauge where we're at, and that obviously has trickled down in the out years. Yeah.
The special education grants that we receive, are those based on numbers, or are they, is it just like a dollar amount or a percentage? How do we get those grants? Because I know we have two different ones. I'm not quite sure.
So, yeah, those, those are not included in the general fund. So those are monies that are, and, and much like a PI fund or a capital improvement fund, they're in their own special fund because they have to be used and tracked for those specific purposes. But those are based on student population and demographics as well as other areas of free, which lunch comes into play and how well their district is considered in comparison to other districts. So there would be districts that maybe have less students with special needs who receive more because of their demographic.
So it certainly doesn't just cover like what we actually need.
No.
Because I was looking at cover, so maybe that doesn't have a certain exact sense.
Yep. So the taxpayer in a, in a district like ours is higher to our local taxpayer because of the fact that we're considered a wealthy district. And actually, because, and you'll, I'll say this again on Tuesday, it's worth mentioning here, our state funding per people drive. Our state funding per pupil dropped by $330 this year. Because the fact that our valuations went up and our enrollment went down. So we're actually receiving more money, but we're receiving less per pupil because of those combinations of things. So we need to continue to find ways to keep busses and seats. So that being said, it's not any, again, and I would never say this, you'll never hear me say this. I never did it this way in the four years I was at Kirtland, and you look at Kirtland's average cost per pupil, and the four years that I was there, it actually dropped each year. Our scores went up. It can be done, it just takes a lot of collaboration, which we have in this district, so I'm confident we'll be able to do it. That you can continue to look at things and change the way we're doing this, because we can't just ask for any money, we're going to have to. You saw clearly that we have to decrease spending. So we need to have that discussion. The last thing I'm going to leave you with, before we just get into a general discussion, and it probably gets in direction, is you have to pass the expired emergency levy by no later than November 24. Obviously, we're not just putting it on here. We can put it on as early as November 23, or May 23, it's just a matter of how quickly we want to do it. I think having a new superintendent, we have to keep that in consideration. We have the need to do it, political climate, we have factors of economic climate that we have to be cognizant of. The Citizens Financial Advisor says we've waited too long already to put the new PI levy on. You know, why didn't we do this back in 18, 19? I believe it's what they said, right? I mean, you guys, yeah. Because no one likes, the easy answer is no one likes going and asking for more money. I mean, that's just, so it's write it out as long as we can. That's not really a good model, I feel. I think we need to be thoughtful in that approach as well. You have to consider the PI levy. Here's our timeline, if you wanted to do a general operating levy, to collect in '25. Here's the timeline, if you want to collect in first half of, you know, second half of '26. So just a visual for us to kind of keep in the back of our minds of when timing wise you have to do that. And again, every May, November, we have an update to the forecast. And if we continue to do better than we've projected on expenses, you know, the amount of money that we can ask would be less for the general operating levy. So if we could do reductions, and maybe it's not a high level levy in '26, maybe it would be a lower level levy in '26.
If we went ahead, knowing that we need to pass it, we will the emergency levy or substitute for whatever, you know, is the best descriptor. And there's a strong case for the PI money. You've made, I think, an excellent snapshot here for us, Bill, for how that goes into all of our budget and our five-year plan. So if we made our, attempted that in May of 2023, continue working on all the cost savings, and any other variables that we'll have more information about, including maybe some staff that will be retiring and so forth, then we would at least tackle the first part that we know we need. And then have discussions as soon as we are aware, you know, kind of how that's working out, and make our case and for an operating levy a year later, let's say, whatever timing looks the best.
Yeah, I mean, the longer you wait, the bigger, the bigger the task is.
Yeah.
The order of key, they're very close together.
Because it would probably be ill-advised to put all three of them together.
That'd be a challenge.
Yeah, I mean, unless you roll the dice.
I mean, in fact, I mean, yes, but for all intents and purposes, you would, you're, you're, you could. I, I guess I don't necessarily know how I feel on that, to be honest. Because of the fact that inherently you're asking for that money anyways. You're just saying, hey, we need 7.5 mils of levy money. We need 2.5 to fund this, we need 5 mils to fund this. This is what this is going to be used for, this is what this is going to be used for.
If we maybe ask now, could we ask for less?
If it was, I mean, no, we did all three.
It doesn't change. Well, you could probably ask for less, yeah, we asked for them all in calendar year '23. Because you start collecting in '24, you could reduce how much millage you would need for general operating.
I'd like to see, I know, I mean, I feel like May is a little soon. November, I feel like gives us a whole, you know, year, but I know Craig, you had mentioned about doing like a community survey, just to make sure ahead of time, so it gives us enough time to address any kind of issues, make sure people feel confident. Is that still kind of something we can do with this?
Yeah, and that's still something we're working with an outside company to try and get that community survey done. So, I think depending on what our conversation is here, that, that can probably tell us the timing of what that would take place.
Would focus groups be valuable, because you could have a more interactive dialogue in addition to the survey? So I would replace one with the other, which is Mr. Heath.
So we sent out that first, for first reading on our Board of Education Policy 1.12, for participation at board meetings that we had discussed at our last work session. And that would be recommended approval at our regular, but it will be our first reading, so that we can do the second reading next week. Are there any questions, concerns, changes from what was sent out?
Was anything changed, I mean, that we get the sessions?
Yeah, that was the only thing. The other part that I will mention as well is we'll get more with Kristen Kirby on the electronic version of that, as well, so that we have that ready to go live. Both an electronic version and a paper version.
And my, I think, what I said there suggested choosing which session, and I didn't realize that you'd already put that in.
Yes, yeah.
So, Claire, if you wanted to speak, are you filling out two? Or are you checking both?
I think we can just check both.
Okay.
And then
And then just both topics.
Yeah. Yeah, and then again, the topics are optional at this point. So, yeah, we, I can check both.
So it was just first session, and then we moved to the for interpretation.
Sure.
And I think we're going to be getting some feedback from people. So we're just going to have to see how it goes.
Yeah.
I'm just hopeful that it brings a little bit more over to our meetings, so that we can hear people, voice any concerns, any questions, and we can get the business of our meeting going.
Really appreciate the conversations over the last couple of work sessions on that, too. I think we made some pretty good strides as we went through all this. Hopefully, we'll have some, some good, good results with this.
We'll see.
Okay.
Be much more similar to all of our peer districts, regional districts, so that there will be impact on continuity there. All right, so we don't have any options, so it's first read.
First read.
Okay. All right. Nothing else for Mr.?
Sure.
No problem. All right, and we'll move on to Chief Financial Officer's report on the presentation.
Thank you, Madam President. Board members, I have passed out the presentations, we have, proud of you. Meeting members, it'll be out on the TVs, so you can see. As we know, in November each year, we have to put out a November forecast, and we're meeting with the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee Thursday, to get their approval for the recommendation at the meeting in the, 2/58. So we're presenting an actual formal forecast then. But with that, we've had many discussions since I became treasurer with the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee about our capital plan, and how we're using general funds to pay for permanent improvements, basically. And a permanent improvement, just as a reminder for the board and the community, is anything that has a useful life of five years. So with that, you know, you, you permanent improvement funds only on items that have a useful life of five years. They can't be used for salaries and benefits, and they can only be used, I just use this books, balls, buses, bricks. So, those are kind of the things that we think about with that. But to kind of look at everything, again, if you look at our strategic plan, you know, our main goal is to maintain enhanced fiscal stability, focusing attention on diligence on short and long-term planning. So when we think of short-term planning, we should be thinking of our budget cycle, our appropriations, which we approved back in September. And again, that obviously ties to our long-term planning with regards to the five-year forecast, because it's a constant cycle of checking back and forth to make sure that we're thinking about, okay, this is what we're going to spend this year, but how does that impact it within the future? As well as, there's more options for alternative revenue to maximize our existing personnel facilities and resources. And we have done that through shared service agreements primarily, as well as the new initiative that we started this year with the new scoreboard with regards to finding advertising revenue to help offset those costs. And we were able to do that this year at the shared board meeting. Third, final goals, we sure continue to balance our approach towards equitable distribution of resources and costs. And when we think of, when I think of better schools, going back to my start back in 2010, this is, this is really, from my perspective, what had shaped me from a financial belief system, from our prior CFO, Mr. Wilson. He ingrained this into me, I used it to drive what I've been doing as superintendent at Kirtland Schools, and I, and I take this to do what we're doing now. You know, everything that we have, we have five, these five fiscal management beliefs. First and foremost, all decisions need to be made in the context of the five-year forecast. The five-year forecast drives everything that we're doing. You know, whether we add a staff member, we add a new program, we reduce the program, reduce the staff member, there's a, there's a trickle-down effect each year in the out-year, and putting us where we're going to be from a standpoint of, you know, I guess, safety, if you will, from an, an economic level. Obviously, it's not my forecast, it's our forecast, it's the board's forecast, it's Mr. Heath and his leadership team's forecast. We, we meet and collaborate on that together. I'm just the, the tool, so to speak, that puts everything together and presents it to the board and the community. But there's lots of communication that goes on with that. And when we talk about things at an administrative level, a lot of times we're talking about what is the impact of that on our forecast? And how does that, you know, how does that project out going forward? We also know that there's management dollars spent, attached to every dollar that we spend. You know, and I think that kind of goes to the last one, too. Quality is always cheaper in the long term. You know, when, when you think about when you're going to purchase something, are you going to purchase the used bus, are you going to get the new bus, are you going to have a five-year bus cycle, you know, a 10-year bus cycle that we have? And all that kind of stuff's in play, right? Because we know if we save on getting something that's a little bit cheaper, we might have to buy it twice rather than once, and get a longer term out of that. So when we look at, when we're purchasing things, we really kind of keep those two principles together as well. And obviously, when we're here educating kids, we want to make sure every dollar spent must add value to teach you to learn. And learning extends outside of the classroom, as we know. We have a, a, a very strong extracurricular program, both athletics and clubs and activities for our students. Because we know kids that are engaged in those activities are better in the classroom, so, you know, we really try to invest in that, and that has returned for our community as well. And then, kind of what we're going to talk a lot about tonight is we have to focus on our major expense areas. We know we're a service industry, so we know the majority of our budget falls into salary and benefits. We also have special ed costs, which are costs that a lot of times we can't control, because we don't know when or if a student is going to have a disability, and so, you know, it's determined that they do through a team process. Obviously, we talked a lot about this in our five-year capital plan. Our facilities, and we have to maintain our facilities. And we've done an excellent job maintaining our facilities across the district. I've worked in a couple of the districts in Lake County that everybody knows, and I'm always impressed at the job our maintenance and the studio staff has done to maintain and keep our facilities. And that goes to the spike of planes that we, we've really spent a lot of time doing. So right now, what you see on the screen is a, basically a summary, high-level summary of our five-year forecast as I have it today. Could that change prior to November 8? Yes, it could. Like I said, we're going to present this again to the Facility, uh, the Facility Commission, Citizens Financial Advisory Group Thursday. And sometimes they give us recommendations that we take into consideration. We make some adjustments prior to presenting to the full board on the 8th. But what you can see on the screen above us is that every year on the out year, we are deficit spending. This year, we're projecting the deficit spend by about seventeen point seven million dollars. We've explained that that is because of the fact that we did our transfer from the general fund to our capital improvement. Yeah, Mr. Stone. Sorry. No, you're good. Yes. We didn't say sandwich, right? I was in cell phones, correct? So this year looks like we're, we're expending more. Remember, that was because we made the decision to fund this year, next year, and the year after for our capital improvement plan. So you can see in the out years, then, we see a reduction in the spend going through about seven point one million dollars to almost eleven million dollars, almost eighteen million dollars. And then in the final year, we're at twenty-two point six million dollars of deficit spending. What that does, obviously, if we're, we're spending more than we're bringing in, we're going to be taking down our cash balance. And that is the typical levy cycle in Ohio with the way that we fund schools. You know, we, we have relatively flat revenue, we have increasing expenses. Obviously, right now, we're seeing higher than typical increase in expenses with inflation rates being, you know, still in the seven to eight percent range. Did do a lot of research out there projecting for out years. They're saying that we should normalize going into next year and cutting it down closer to three and a half percent. And then probably the next three years after that, four years after that, we should be at two and a half percent. So those are some of the assumptions that I made in our forecast when we didn't have a specific dollar amount of budget because it's zero-based budget. So all in all, we're at that point where, and we knew this when I came in, our expenses have exceeded our revenues and we are deficit spending. So we need to start thinking about ways to continue to tighten our balance, to flatten our expense curve, but also to, when is going to be the right time to generate additional revenue? So this is just kind of where we're at now, based on where I've updated since June's forecast with what we have and what we know now.
Do you have any prognostication about the biennial budget and how that's going to look for funding for students?
I think I'm optimistic that when they, it'll be interesting what happens out of OSBA. I think we'll learn a lot out there if we're going to Columbus in the next few weeks. But that being said, I think what we're trying to, to push is that we, and I assumed in the forecast is that the, the current funding model from the state would continue into the future. Obviously, you know, we're making a forecast on something that we only know is going to be guaranteed for two years and we're ending the year, this year, we'll get a new budget for the next two years. But everything that I have heard is that, that we're optimistic that that's going to continue in some shape or form. So those, that can make that assumption for our state funding fund.
If we get a governor, that could change things, right?
Oh, yeah, correct. Yes.
That's up in the air. So you're assuming that the funding model stays the same?
Yes. I have no other reason to believe that we would not at this current time. And the organization and the meetings, I don't think, have you heard anything different?
Everything that I've heard is that of the state.
Interestingly enough, you all approved me to be able to, and I appreciate, to attend the Georgetown University Financial Certificate coursework. And I did two of those days last week in Cleveland. And it was interesting because we had participants from all over the country, Las Vegas, New Mexico, East Coast, everywhere. So we're having those discussions. And one of the things that the professor was presenting from Georgetown is because of the influx of money that we've received from the federal government across the country, she referred to it as the bloodletting, the finances that's going to occur in 2024 approximately because that money has to be spent and run out, and then that initial revenue is not going to be there. So, you know, one of the things that we've talked about, you know, how do we continue to tighten our belts to be, continue to be even better stewards of our taxpayer dollars as we move forward? So that we can kind of shift some of these out years as much as we have. And you'll see that towards the end, some of the discussions that Mr. Heath and I have started to have. But it's going, you know, we're, we're seeing a shrinking economy because the Federal Reserve increasing rates. We know that they're going to probably continue that trend of increasing rates, which is obviously going to continue to push up our, our loan rates, which is going to slow down the economy. The Federal Reserve is trying to do that softly, as they say. We'll see because we haven't seen much movement. You know, we're seeing, you know, minor reductions in inflation growth. But I just saw something last week from an economist that I follow on social media that said that, you know, the housing market, the pricing is starting to decrease. And they're seeing like television decreases in the amount that price houses are going for. But it's not like the recession that we saw earlier because that was a bubble, right? This is just because of the fact that, you know, now that the rates are going up, people want, you know, drop the prices because the market's still there. There's, there's not a high, there's a high demand still for housing, but the market is still not saturated like it was back in the day. People have a nice, they've extended themselves. So will we end up in recession? My projection and everything, and that reason we will. But we're still a very strong economy, so it's like, it's an interesting dynamic, economic that we have here. So makes forecasting really fun. So that's a little CFO humor.
Do we know when the safety ban that Mr. Porter completed for us? When will appear on that funding?
Yeah, but Mr. Porter actually asked me about that the other day, if I had heard anything yet, and I haven't done.
Yeah, neither have I. I just checked it in the mail, and he didn't, like you said, he hadn't heard.
So that, I know that's not horde, because those are enhancements that we would run with that money. And the other thing was, when we have our meeting in December, do you anticipate knowing whether or not to buy out? Is it go and what, and we have that might happen?
When is our December meeting, as you reminded me, this meeting? Can we look at you?
Because we're, we're looking at. I don't think so. Ultimately, I don't think, but I think we'll have a better idea because it closes on the ninth. We have the seven days, the sixteenth would be the final day, because they can retract. And then we need some time to be able to evaluate the economics of the future and it moves forward. We've seen quite a bit of interest. There was, yeah, so by thirteenth, we won't, we'd have a better idea why the organization will be changing. And this does not assume, to a good point, and I have this in my assumption that's spelled out, this does not assume that because of the timeline issue. So I do.
And the good thing is that would be on the positive side if something unexpected tips, you know, things in, in any given. So if the wash would be hopefully enough to make at least that.
Correct. So what you see here is our kind of the graphic, which I think is telling, right? It shows you at a kind of a graphic level of where we're at. This is the shortfall of revenue per, by year. You can see 2021 was our first year that we did deficit spend, and we have, we continue that trend. I think the interesting thing that I will point out is if you look at how much we deficit spent in 2022, which was my first year as the CFO, and then how much we're going to deficit spend in 2024 projected, that's the same. So it's relatively flat, so to speak, right? That means that we, in those, those years, even with inflation and the increases that we were able to negotiate in our contract, but remember, we offset those with the healthcare concessions that we had. And then we worked hard to get the request proposal for medical in our execution. It helped us keep our rate at four percent increase coming out of 2023, which was about eleven to fourteen percent lower than we would have had if we would have done nothing. And we were, we were expecting, you know, a six point seven five percent, I think, or a six and a quarter. Again, I can go back to one of my notes, so to be specific, in the out years. We even did better than we projected based on some things that we're thinking. So we need to continue to do that, and I have a lot more of that discussion going on, so I don't want to foreshadow too much.
So when was the last time we went for new money?
That would be 2016. I was knocking on doors my last year as the principal of Hupp Banner High School. And we passed the continuing operating levy, a little bit over fifty-one percent, I think, to, it was close.
Close to two hundred and change.
Yeah. That was a continuing operating in 2016. So we've, we've made it six years. The average levy cycle is anywhere is probably closer to three to four years.
I remember when we went for that, we figured we'd be in a, like a four to five-year cycle.
Yeah. So we're at six. And I think we can probably extend, you know, our goal is obviously to extend it as much as possible.
Part of that, I think, it'd been twelve years.
Twelve or thirteen years, yeah. Because that was the financial crisis in 2000.
Fiscal crisis.
Yeah, 2004. So we made twelve years, which was unheard of.
Yes.
But that was again because of the fiscal management principle that Dr. Williams and Mr. Wilson at the time have instituted. We continue to follow here today. Again, I like my graphs because I think it helps people show what's going on. So the blue bar represents our revenue, orange is our expenses, and the green line represents our cash balance. So you can kind of see everything working in unison, how, how it's working there. What I will share in, it's all right if I stand up. I didn't speak, so you know. What you'll see here too, though, I point out in these three years, remember these blue bars get shorter because I'm making an assumption, right? I can't, I can't do what, this is the teacher in me. Why, why am I going down in these out years here? What needs to happen? What do we need to pass?
The renewals.
The renewals, right? So this takes off the renewals being there because we can't assume, and these upper lines are the forecast that it's going to pass. We added it lower, so in this graph, I just want to point out, it looks like we lose revenue. We actually did lose revenue. We're just not assuming that we're guaranteeing that we're going to pass the mercy renewal levy that's up in 2024. So this, this negative cash balance here is inflated as well by the appropriate amounts of the revenue that's taken away. So it's, it's going to be a little bit different than your lower lines on the forecast. But I, I show it just because it shows multiple things, right? It shows that we are, orange is higher than blue, so we're deficit spending. And it also shows what that's doing to our cash balance in that green line. And it shows how important it is for us to pass those renewal levies prior to the end of calendar year 24 because if we don't, that's, that's what that looks like. So. Any questions? I'm still good. So this, I give Mr. Heath all the credit for this because when I run over this presentation with him, he's like, hey, so what is that budget reserve policy again? And I'm like, oh, yeah, I should probably throw a slide in there and remind everybody. So we have, the board has created a policy that is unique. This is a policy that's unique to matter. So asking the question from last week's work session, you know, how will we get this in? We'll just make sure that this gets in. So we have this unique policy, a policy eight point zero, two point one, which is our budget reserve policy that states that we have to have a budget reserve fund. And by law, and we learned this, you know, through the audit process, that you can't have a budget reserve fund that exceeds five percent of your revenue. So five percent of our revenue, or what we have currently now is actually a little bit less than our revenue. It's five point, almost two million dollars in our reserve fund that we have. The board has to give authority for us to spend that money. And the board outlines in the policy that that's for one-time expenses, emergencies, and so on and so forth. But anything that we ever want to spend out of that, we have to bring to you to get approval. So we don't have access, so to speak, to that five million dollars. So it's a rainy day fund, right? The state of Ohio has one. Governor Kasich, I believe, started that for the state, and then Governor Williams continued that. We, they built up a pretty nice little mess. Ours is dictated by law that you can't be more than five percent of revenue. So if you never exceed a little bit more than five point two million dollars. We also stated, the Board of Education shall maintain a minimum general fund cash balance of fifteen percent of the annual total general fund expenses less the amount of the general fund operating reserve fund. I had to read that statement like a hundred times when I first became CFO because I thought it was just the way it's worded is confusing, but that's a policy. So what it's basically saying is that in total, between the budget reserve and X percent, we have to be fifteen percent of our total year expenses. So for me, I'm a numbers guy. Our appropriations this year was a hundred and twenty-six million dollars. Fifteen percent of our expenses equals eighteen point nine million dollars. We have five point two, so that means we have to maintain a cash balance of thirteen point seven. So between the two, the budget reserve and a cash balance of fifteen percent, the board has a policy that says that our cash balance can't drop below this year, eighteen point nine million dollars. Again, remember, this number's depleted because we transferred almost fourteen million dollars to the O-70. So it's actually less than this because it will be less than this next year because it's based on the year's deferred expenses. But just keep the number thirteen point seven in the back of your mind because by, by policy, you said, as a board to the community, we won't let our general fund cash balance fall below that. If it, you know, we'd have to, you know, take action to avoid that. So it's kind of our threshold that we set is, is a worst-case scenario that we have to seek additional revenue prior to that by policy, which was based on a white paper research done by OASB. And many corporations and the like have similar types of thresholds that they use and engage that. And I think it's, it's a great policy that you guys worked out with Mr. Wilson because it really, it defines it, right? It's not something, when, you know, when do we have that? This is like, we're going to, we're thinking about this in advance, right? We're, we're always thinking ahead, thinking out. So this discussion started literally at my first Citizens Financial Advisory Committee meeting because we were talking about the money that we transfer out to the capital improvement fund from the general fund. And the capital improvement fund is its own separate fund outside of the general fund. Because our PI levy, which was passed in nineteen eighty-eight, generates about a million dollars. It's a one-bill levy. It generates about a million dollars. But as we know, every year since nineteen eighty-eight, we've seen inflationary increases. So because it's a fixed-dollar levy, it can only generate the same amount of money. So what happens is every time we see an increase in profit valuation, there's a corresponding decrease in the effective military. The effective military rate now is below point four. So what that means is, is if we were to pass the same one-bill levy in today's dollars, we'd be generating about two point one million dollars. Think about it, what you've made, your, your purchasing power has decreased over time. But we've continued as a district to rely on that one million dollar to maintain a two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar plant. So it's amazing that we've been able to do so. We've done so by using general fund dollars to help us do that. And that's just, and you've heard me say this a lot. Again, this is the science background of me, like, I like to see the research. I like to have justification and rationale because I think it's important when you're speaking to the board or the community to say, how do we come up with a logical number of what we should really have? They did research, their architecture program, they published a paper particularly for schools and school facility maintenance. And they said, and I'm oversimplifying because some of the math is actually pretty interesting, like overly complicated. So I was like, how do I just simplify this for us? Is it two percent of replacement value? Mr. Baccarala, as you guys know, is our assistant treasurer. Him and I had had this discussion. He's like, well, I would argue that the two-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars isn't really our replacement value. That's just our total insured value. So I just use total insured value as a holder for us for replacement value because he would argue to build our, if we had to rebuild everything, it's going to cost us more than two-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars, I think we'd all agree, right? I mean, the high school, the middle schools, the seven elementaries, just those buildings alone, we'd probably be over, over that. But again, I like to keep things relatively simple for us as we try just to have a discussion. So I'm going to use our total insured value as the replacement value, which means that we should equate, we should basically be budgeting five million dollars annually just to maintain our facilities. We currently use one million dollars. So it's no surprise that we're using general fund money to, to do that. And there's nothing wrong with that. You, you know, general fund money, if you think about restrictions, general fund has no restrictions. It just has to be approved by the board. And our policy says, you know, at a, at a general fund, about what we're looking for, one-digit option. So I think that when we switch objects, so if we go from four hundred, five hundred, after you guys have approved it, and we switched it this year, you have to give us authority to do that. Permanent improvement money, though, again, is more restricted. It can, cannot be used for everything. It can only be used for anything that has a useful life of five years. So it's, it's, it's its own kind of like, if you're looking at a circle, it's a circle within a circle that kind of limits what it can be used for. Our current general fund allocation on average over the length of forecast is about three point seven million dollars annually that we are pushing from the general fund to our capital improvement fund. And so we're thus spending about four point four million dollars annually just to prevent it from making misrepairs and upgrades. Every June, starting a couple of years ago, we presented this to the board to, so that we had a five-year capital plan. And what this slide does is it really just kind of summarizes a couple of things. At the top, it shows you each, the, the PI revenue that we generate each year. So it's just the ninety, nine hundred seventy-four thousand. The middle slide is how much we're spending on facility expenses. This would be our roofs, this would be our window repairs, this would be the various things that we plan out for the out years. The science lab replacements at the high school that are fifty years old that, you know, need to be updated. Our construction manager risk expenses are our other facility upgrades that we're doing because of the need to upgrade facilities. You know, that's going to, that paid for the new softball field. That's going to pay for the new baseball field. It's going to pay for the building of the new entrance and weight room at the stadium and some of the other upgrades that we're doing. The other thing that I wanted to point out tonight is there's many expenses that we have just historically paid for out of the general fund because we only have a million dollars to do that, right? And you've heard me say it a number of times, and I think it's worth mentioning again tonight. I could spend that million dollars every year on roofs. We have a ten-year roof plan that actually exceeds a million dollars. I have about another five hundred thousand dollars in paving and cement maintenance that we have to do because you've seen it, right? If you walked into the high school, if you walk out in front of the high school fire last year, you would see the cement was cracked. You know, we were trying to repair it, and we put that in with the, the new, the new paving that we had out around here. And if you drove in this year, and what is it, the sound clock had the light compared to the last year. If you didn't have a Hummer last year, you would have probably lost, you would have been replacing a tire and some shocks. This year's nice and smooth. I mean, but we, 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 I guess the reason why I bring that up is because I had our group with Mr. Baccarala coming on board to work with Mr. Kolar to create a paving and cement maintenance five-year program too because it's a big expense for us. Because we know that every parking lot at some point needs to have sections or lots of them replaced. Again, when you have eleven dual needs, that's just the nature of it, right?
Do you know what the increase in the cost for cement and asphalt and the work that goes to installing it, how much that grew over the last couple of years?
Oh, I'd say, this is a guess, this is, don't quote me, I'm on record, clearly. Mr. Bassi, don't check me on this one. The, probably at least fifteen to twenty percent.
That's what I was thinking.
And I, and I say that because I've seen it happen in the roofing industry. Those materials, tar-based materials have gone up drastically, plastics have gone up. So we've seen that. But I don't have the actual figure, and I just know some of our estimates, though, from when we did the plan for the replacement of the drive. As you noticed, there were sections that we just didn't do, as I shared with the board because we couldn't, we saw an increase of almost fifty to seventy-five percent of what we thought initially when we did it three years ago. So we know it's gone up. We also have a vehicle plan because we have maintenance vans and pickup trucks for plowing and other cars that we have in the district that we have to maintain. So we have a five-year cycle for that. All that's being subsidized right now at the general fund. We buy five buses every year to help maintain our fleet so that, again, we don't want all of our buses to go out at one time. So we, we go through and cycle them out because you don't want, you know, year thirteen, all your buses to be up because that's a huge expense. So you call up the plan. Our technology plan that Mr. Lynch and his team present to the board every year, as well as our furniture plan that we have. And like I said, I added, based on some of our numbers and our analysis, that we did some additional money that we would, that we don't even have budgeted right now that we would need for cement and paving if we're going to do it right to maintain and have a regular cycle.
Does the tech include the auction and used equipment?
It does not include the revenue for that.
I know it's small, but it.
Yeah, so that, we do, we do directly, and the revenue assumptions have that in there. It's built in, but it's not considered in this specifically. You'll see it, I think, in a later slide. So you see our total potential PI expenses annually on average are about six point five billion dollars. So you can see our total potential P I expenses annually on average are about six point five million dollars. But again, remember, five of that's for plant, plant maintenance. And then the other million and a half is because of those other things that we could spend out of P I funds. So just as an FYI, those are things that relate to, you know, that's, that's, those aren't education, those are things that are important education, right? I mean, even with the kids to school, they gotta have a roof over their head and they have to have a building that's well kept. So, you know. So what's the solution? So the board asked me last year to come up with some scenarios and solutions to run, what would be the impact? And how does that kind of all trickle out? So I ran three scenarios. I ran three levy scenarios. If you were to ask for a one point five mil levy strictly for permanent improvements, a two point oh mil per levy and a two point five mil per levy. As basis for discussion, obviously, we could say two point three, we could say whatever we wanted. But I wanted to give a range and kind of make a recommendation and let the board digest that to do, to kind of move forward. As well as show you and the community what that does to those other expense areas that I showed, and then how that impacts the five year forecast moving out. And what could that do to a need for general operating levy money later on? Because this does not solve the fact that by some point, we're still going to need general operating levy money. Because again, if we get a P I levy, that is only going to be used for specific things as I just shown. And we will need a general operating levy to cover salaries and benefits, which equates for seventy eight percent of our budget. So all of this information is just a summation of everything that I showed you on the last slide. The P I revenue is what we know it always to be. If we were to pass a one point four million dollar levy for permanent improvements prior to November twenty three, then we could collect in the spring collection of twenty four, which remember is the second half collection of the fiscal year. Which is always confusing, right? Because it's the first collection of the calendar year, second half collection of the fiscal year. So that's why you only see a one point seven million dollar revenue generated in fiscal year twenty four because we only see partial collection. And then you see the full collection coming on in fiscal year twenty five and so, and going forward. So that would increase our permanent improvement fund to a total of four point three million dollars a year. So we know in our five year capital plan how much money that we're spending each year. We have that, we have that budgeted already, we've already done that. So when you compare the four point three to these values, when we start collecting in twenty four, and we've already transferred money to the capital improvement fund, remember, we had fourteen million dollars basically this year. I can transfer some of that money back to the general fund because now we have money coming in at a greater rate. Again, that's why we set up the capital improvement fund. Because if you put money into the permanent improvement fund, it can never come back out by the law. We set up the capital fund in the event that we ever had a P I levy that increased, you could then transfer money back. So what you'll see up here is when we pass the levy, I can transfer back five million or the fourteen million that we just transferred. Going back in the general fund revenue. So the revenue for that year is going to go up by five million dollars in the general fund. So you're going to see a spike in general fund revenue for one year because we're putting the money back in. Because inherently, we reduce the expenses by increasing the permanent improvement. Well, if we have four point three and my cost for these two areas is three point eight, I have four hundred sixty six thousand dollars of permanent improvement money that I can do something else with. Again, here, I have thirty, or three hundred thirty five thousand. You'll notice in this year twenty seven, I still don't have enough. So we'd have to send a hundred eighty four thousand dollars from the general fund to either an O seven O or a, or a P I fund. This money then can be used, and I just chose in this case to make it simple, this expenses for buses here and here by the appropriate amount. So again, we're able to put money back into the general fund at five million dollars, cover the costs for the C M R projects and our facility upgrades that we're doing and repairs, roofs, windows, classrooms that we talked about, as well as reduce the expense of the general fund of four hundred fifty six and three hundred thirty five thousand, and drastically reduce how much we have to transfer this year twenty seven as we're assuming, you know, it's almost like four million dollars in this year's forecast for twenty seven. Does that logic make sense? So you can see it's not enough. What it does to your forecast is now we're only deficit spending by two million dollars here. Because again, we generated five million, five million in revenue that we put back in and we reduced some expenses. And we reduced expenses in all the out years. So we're better off from a financial perspective with a one point five million dollar levy. But you should be careful internally, it's not enough. It's just how much do you want to have for spending with regards to permanent improvements?
Bill, how much would that be on a hundred thousand dollar house, like for the?
Can I show you at the end?
Oh, yeah.
I have that.
I didn't look ahead.
No, no, good, appreciate it. But I have, yeah, yeah, I have that. I have that all for you, yeah. Because that was definitely part of the discussion to consideration, a hundred percent.
What I like about it is that it proportions tax collected more clearly for how it's being used. Because I think our community takes pride in the facilities that we provide. They share them with us in, in lots of cases, whether it's, you know, city functions or teams using fields and so on. I, I think rather than having it just come out of the general fund, it lets you see more clearly how it's being used.
It's tangible, right? You can, well, you can always see it, but you can.
Yeah.
I can, I can bring it in, I can show you, I can go show you the roof, like, they'll see the roof, right? Uh, but you can, you can definitely, it's definitely tangible. So I have this in here, just kind of, again, if you wanted to flip back to the first one, you can see the difference is, puts us in a much better position. And I have a slide that will summarize them all together, just so you can see everything as one. I'm just trying to keep things logical. Um, remember, this is one of my favorite slides because it talks to us about, okay, where we're at with regards to the need for a levy. And it kind of relates your revenue shortfall to your cash balance. And because we're, we, we are transferring so much money, we're actually in the red this year, but it's, again, it's a one time transfer, so we know it's not really where we're at. And then if we did pass the one point five mil levy, that puts us almost in the green. And you can see it pushes out the likelihood of when that levy would need to occur for general operating dollars. The longer you wait, though, remember, the more that the levy is going to have to be. So there, there is, there is the timing piece of that that comes into play. This slide is more so inherent because it shows a summary. And it does go beyond the five year forecast and obviously, these are not drastic. I mean, anything beyond years one and two, I always say, are, are kind of, you know, you never know where it's going to land on. So these aren't very reliable, but they give a picture, right? They tell a story for us to kind of consider. The reason why this slide is on here for you guys and for us is because this is what's most important. It says levy mileage needs estimator. So if you waited until twenty twenty five, based on what we just had, to be able to cover the deficit that we have, we're looking at a levy of eight point eight to seven point seven mils. If you have it in twenty twenty four, it's between five point seven and seven point seven four. I'm going to be honest, I don't want to be this guy. That's, that's going to be a tough sell to anybody in good times. I've tried to pass a six point nine million levy before. Put on twenty pounds and I lost. That wasn't a good move. Two mils. So this is, again, the same information. Now it's assuming a two point zero mil per, uh, permanent improvement levy. Generates five point four million dollars in total with the current P I levy that we have. Key feature here is now we're transferring about one point seven million dollars more back to the general fund. And you can see that, uh, the amount of money that we have to offset other permanent improvement expenses to the right is more. So in twenty five, we could purchase all of our buses out of the permanent improvement levy and about a million dollars worth of the technology. All the buses in twenty six, all the buses in twenty seven, and part of the technologies in twenty six and twenty seven respectively. So that allows us to, you know, kind of cross this off the board and, you know, put a decent dent into those based on our current plan that we have. Again, the average spend per year is still six and a half million dollars. Generating about five point four, so about one point one million dollars less than all the, the permanent improvements that we can have. And again, kind of echoing the comment we talked about, these fours are collecting through. The P I levy allows you to purchase specific things. Yep.
Should it say new P I two mils additional?
It should, I apologize. Yeah. Yeah, I apologize, I switched it at the very top, I associate that slide. So what that does to the five year forecast, because we reduce those other expenses in the buses and technology, and we transferred back the six point seven million dollars of the revenue, and it proves our out years a little bit more. Still deficit spending the entire time, just, you know, not as, not as bad. And again, that assumes all of our current assumptions stay the same. Which I'm going to tell you by the end that they can't. Hey, where are you reading? Here too. Because we're almost, we're almost even. Five hundred thousand dollars on a hundred and ten million dollar budget is the easy thing to cut. You could find, you could five, I can five hundred, I can find it. Mr. Heath can find it. Miss Estes can find five hundred thousand dollars. Still have, you know, eight point three and seven point three two levy needs in twenty five. You know, but now, you know, you're down a little bit closer. But again, we're still deficit spending because our expenses haven't really changed. Two point five mils. Again, Mrs. Bryner, that should be two point five in that second box. Mr. Heath and Mr. Beckerala, who are my editors, did not catch that. So sorry, I missed that. I should send it to you first. So you can see now we're at six point five million generating of permanent improvement dollars, which is what we have here tied in at two point five, I'll work my way back. It's not, I'm not a magician, it's just simple math. That allows us to transfer eight point three million dollars back to the general fund. It covers all of our expenses as well as leave some additional money there in the account in the event that an emergency happens. Because let's be honest, a boiler could go, a roof that we were hoping to push off to year ten needs to be replaced sooner. Those types of things can happen. It gives, gives the district a cushion to, to have that. And there's things still that we purchase in building, in business operations out of the general fund that could be even, that are even on this list. So. Look at that, year twenty twenty four, we're at deficit spending. But we are in all the out years.
So just to clarify something, Bill, on this screen here.
Yep.
The way I'm interpreting this screen on each scenario you gave us is we're taking care of our permanent improvements. We're good for a year, but we're still going to need the general.
Yes, yes.
We need to take care of our general.
Correct, yeah.
We're just getting our P I.
We're getting the P I over, reducing expenses that could be taken out of P I revenues, which then has helped reduce the expenses overall in our general fund.
Because when I look at twenty four, we look good. And then twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven, look a little better, but we're still bad. And it's telling you we're still going to need another levy.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's, yeah, this is just, this is kind of like doing two things at once, right? There's really big things that we have to do. You know, we have to pass the emergency levy renewal. We can either do a P I in a general fund or we can just do a general fund and continue to spend out of the general fund like we have it. That's not my recommendation. I've been clear on that since I started. The Assistant Financial Committee's been clear on that. They think that we should have specific monies for specific things because that's those, what those dollars can be used for. There's no just mistake that that's from a taxpayer standpoint, that's what I'm spending this money on is for these things that the district has communicated out and we update it every year. So it's, it's, in our district, it's never, it should never be if you're in form and you come to the meetings. So you've all heard me, because I, I know a lot of the faces that are here, we've said this multiple times since I've started, that these are, you know, we have this capital improvement plan. We've, we've budgeted it out. We have a vehicle replacement plan, we have a bus replacement plan, we have a plan for technology, we have a plan for furniture, and we now have added a plan for paving and cement. But when seventy eight percent of your budget salary and benefits, you're just kicking the can down the road, so to speak.
Bill, can I mention one thing to you? Correct me if I'm wrong on this too, but if you go back to that thirteen point seven million dollar figure that we were talking about, is, is this that, that dollar figure that we're looking at in year twenty twenty?
Because, yeah, because we still have, we still have the budget reserve on top of that too.
And I believe that's the scenario that actually has that all the way through that.
Yeah.
Of it to order a year.
In our budgets, yeah, I mean, thirteen million dollars is a lot of money. I'm not dismissing that, but when you're spending a hundred to thirteen million dollars a year, that doesn't last long, right? Like if you're, and you're only bringing in a hundred and seven million dollars, you're, that's gone in two years. And if you think about it, to reduce by a million dollars, that's roughly ten teachers. That's roughly conservatively twenty classified staff. I mean, that, that's, 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 that's a lot, you know, that's, that's a lot of people. That's, you're starting to feel that in the classroom or whether, or if, you know, we can't get rid of bus drivers.
If we change the class size.
Oh, we could. I mean, I just don't think we should. You can, you can get rid of bus drivers if your level of service would be the same, right? You have to change the level of service. So, you know, everything, you know, there's an impact, there's, there's a trip with that. My job is to share the numbers. His job is to determine like what those should be with, obviously, that's, that's not just his job, but we do that together. But there's, there is a, there's a choice, right? There's a varied choice to every dollar that we spend and don't spend and what the impact of that is.
Bill, these numbers are not including what Jenny mentioned earlier, right? With the possible buyout.
Correct, yeah.
Because that could change things as well.
Correct.
Not to time, but, okay, no change in staff. And this isn't including any kind of projections of decrease and enrollment. They know it's slightly changed over the years, or is it?
It does include, it does include decreases enrollment, but it does not include, this is a discussion I needed to have with you tonight. We needed to have with you tonight because we need direction on how you want us to proceed in the out years due. Because we can, you know, that, that's kind of what we need to do, right? I mean, it's, because if you say, hey, yeah. Yeah, so we need to, we need, that's part of that discussion too.
Correct.
Good points.
And the original nineteen eighty eight levy remains, of course, we'd be adding P I collections on top of it.
Correct.
New money.
Correct.
Just so that it's not a replacement.
It's not a replacement, no. That money's still there, still being collected, we're adding on to it, yes. Good question. Again, kicking the can down the road helps us reduce expenses that are. Again, kicking the can down the road helps us reduce expenses that are beyond. We're still, still in that spot. Lowers those levy amounts. Which should make sense, right? Because you're, you're adding additional revenue in a PI fund to reduce expenses corresponding. And so really, you're not, it's the same, right? You can, you could ask for eight point eight mils, and if you pass great, then you don't need a two point oh, you know, a one point five mil levy in PI. You're just, you're funneling the money into specific pools, so to speak, so they can only be used for specific things. So I told you, kind of summarizing everything together. So the blue line here is our current trajectory as is. If we go to a one point five, a two, or a two point five, that's our cash balance. So you can see how the cash balance improves in the out years if we were to, you know, to do those scenarios that I said. Because using that extra money to reduce buses, buses, the technology, or reduce everything. So that's how our cash balance is extended in the general fund in the out years. There's also, this graph shows how expenses change based on those same assumptions. So this is just a visual of all the spreadsheets that it showed you collectively together. So you can see, because we start collecting in twenty four, full collection in twenty five, twenty six, and twenty seven. Obviously, the red is now the two point five, the blue, the black is the two, the one point five, and then adds it. You can see here, our expenses are a hundred thirty two million in twenty seven. If we do a two point five mil levy, they're a hundred and twenty six, because that's again, we're taking buses, we're taking tech, now we're taking all those expenses and putting them into the PI fund. Not spending any different, just spending it from a different fund. Just want to be clear. Your numbers person, to go with those graphs, yours, the cash balance, the dollar quantity goes with it. So we go from being a negative cash balance in our current model to being a thirty three thousand, a thirty three million dollar cash balance if we do the two point five bills.
This seems like a perfect companion to the twenty eighteen, right, sizing of the district where we reshuffled our, our zones for the elementary schools and closed some buildings so that we didn't have excess space that we were, you know, not feeling as efficiently as possible. Closing the middle school and transitioning that to the elementary. So I really appreciate this.
I don't remember my next slide. This is kind of like Jack.
Surprise.
Oh, there it is. I didn't know that was really the next one I could do. But I knew you were asking questions, see?
You do.
We were here. So the question is always, what's this going to cost the taxpayer? It is a, this is the right question, right? For, we do it on a hundred thousand dollar home, assuming that people can do the math. If I live in a three hundred thousand dollar home, I would just multiply this number here by three. So these are your annual costs. These would be your monthly costs per hundred thousand. So if we pass a two point five mil levy and live in a two hundred thousand dollar home, I'm roughly paying, what, sixty, one seventy five?
Now, Bill, you say two hundred thousand dollar home. Is that the tax assessment?
No, that is the actual market value. I've done the math for you. So I did the thirty five percent multiplied by the two point five divided by the thousand. Mr. Vassik checked my math. Thank you. We're neighbors.
And friends, and friends.
Yes. Um, so there's a, again, there's a cost to the community to do this. So if the average home is three hundred thousand dollars in the, in the area, you're, you're looking at, you know, two hundred, you know, fifty, sixty dollars, or two hundred and sixty dollars a year. But a lot of people, if we were surveying them, they'd know that this money's going to specific tangible items that it's, it's different than a general fund operating rate. Um, my suggestion would be, if we do this, we would do it for five years. We wouldn't go right out and ask for it to be permanent or continuous. We would want to show the community that we can, we're going to continue to be the stewards that we have that always, with their money, earn their trust. Um, the permanent improvement levy could be anywhere from five to ten to permanent, continuous. And then maybe after one or two tries, you can go to ten years, and then ultimately you can look at it continuous because, you know, our needs of maintaining our buildings aren't going to change. You know, but at some point, if we consolidate buildings or, you know, if we move on, we can reduce that if we go to new, to do, um, do buildings. And I'm not suggesting we build new buildings, but I mean, our summer buildings are fifty, sixty, seventy years old. We've maintained them, so we're gonna, you know, we're gonna continue to have them. But at some point, if we wanted to build another elementary school that was larger combined two or three, because there's efficiencies in size, you wouldn't necessarily need this PI levy to give this amount. You could reduce that.
Did the Citizens Financial Committee, have they looked and considered you're gonna be sharing that?
I'm gonna share that with them on Thursday.
Phil, would it be helpful, every time there's a levy of, people look at that and say, well, I have a two hundred fifty thousand dollar home. But they also have to be appraised on it. So they get confused over mileage and what they're paying taxes on. So if you listed it as the market value, what they suppose that house is worth today, really, and how often do we get a tax break?
Every three years.
Three years. So that, that stays constant. So are we better off comparing it to the upgrade levy, or should we tell them both? They need to understand market value versus.
To me, it just seems, if I like selling my house for three hundred thousand dollars, it's easier for me just to go, okay, hey, this ties three. That's roughly rid of my taxes, because you're not gonna be, you're probably not gonna be low. If you start getting into assessed value, appraised value, I'm under the guise of I'm explaining I'm losing. That's, that's my mantra. You know, and I think, and it's not to deceive. I know sometimes people say it's to deceive. It's not really to deceive because if, a lot of people live month to month budget. That's why I put month to month budget number in there. You know, they, they, that's how they, they want to know what it's gonna cost them. How much am I gonna not be able to spend now because you just raised my taxes? And for me, a hundred thousand dollars is easy because if, I think most people can do the math, right? I live at a two hundred or eight hundred thousand dollar home, I can just multiply by two or eight. Um, it, but it's always, it's, what you're saying is, yes, it's always a question that has to be discussed. And to me, it's just easier for me to have this discussion as I'm trying to explain it from my role. So we have to, I guess we don't have to do something, but we have to do something. My recommendation would be not to do anything. Um, so we have levy actions and timelines. So on the far right, you have your primary schedule for this coming year, calendar year. Uh, we have a primary election in May, August special election. I don't recommend us going on the ballot in August. Um, but this graphic that I had has it there. Uh, and then the general election in November.
If we go with a specialist, don't you bear the full cost?
Yes, you bears full cost, but it's just, having sat in the super Tennessee, it just seems like you're, people always assume that we're trying to sneak it on. They, they sometimes, but it's not necessarily, I'm not saying that's why it happens in August. The issue that we have is we have to pass it before the calendar year. So we wanted some, you know, a lot of times you just want to get it on and get it passed, and you want to use every opportunity that you have. Because if you don't, then you're having to cut. I typically try to stick to, recommend that we stick to the spring and this, the fall. But if you don't pass by November, remember you lose the whole year of collections. Can't.
Can we try a stupid, so that's it?
Uh, for the emergency levy?
For the renewal.
For the renewal, we have four. Well, yes, six, because you could use the August. But you have, we can start on the spring of, of May, May of twenty twenty three. So with that, we have to have the discussion on, do we want to keep it as an emergency levy? Which means it can only be passed for five or ten years. We're coming up with ten year expiration now. It's from two thousand thirteen. Expires in calendar year twenty twenty four. Do we want to make it a substitute levy, which is another fixed dollar levy? Substitute levies can be for one, five, ten, continuous. We've passed this emergency renewal a number of times prior to, um, either way, it's not a new tax, it is a renewal. The difference between an emergency and substitute, besides the timeframe, and there's something to be said about voter fatigue. So it is a consideration. But the difference between emergency and substitute is also a substitute levy ratchets up. And what I mean by ratchets up is when you have new construction, that new construction gets added to the levy, so it collects more. An emergency levy, you collect more for that year, and then it ratchets back down to the same dollar amount, it's a fixed dollar amount. So the fixed dollar amount stays the same. So we always collect, let's say it's a two million dollar emergency levy. Um, it would be two million dollars forever. A new construction levy, you know, you get added on the assessed valuation at thirty five percent of the effective mortgage rate at that time. That gets added on, so it has a slight increase.
So new construction can add on?
For substitute, for substitute levies, yeah.
For a substitute levy for the new construction during that holding at that time?
Yep. So you see growth. So there's a, and the reason why I like that is because our, as we all know, our revenue's flat, and we don't, we don't see growth. The city benefits from income tax. Right? Income tax is a, there's growth to it. People make more money, the city gets more income tax. I'm not suggesting that we have an income tax. I'm just saying that there's growth built into it. Ours, we don't see it, it's relatively flat. The only time that we've seen more money is we saw a little bit of bump this year, right? Because we saw the reappraisals came in high. But we don't see all of that. We only see it on the inside village. Because by House Bill nine twenty, the effective rates of the rest of the levies drop correspondingly. And that's to protect the taxpayer from huge inflationary increases like we just saw. But a lot of times people say, oh my God, I got a sixteen percent increase, now my taxes are gonna go up, it corresponds to value, and it's not necessarily the case.
It seems like a two thousand and four emergency levy isn't described appropriately in twenty twenty two. You know, what was an emergency that grew out of that era, you know, we've gotten a lot of things in order.
Yeah, the term emergency, just to clarify, is a misnomer.
Yeah.
And it does, you're not really, you're not really passing, one of the reasons is because you have a financial emergency. But it's also because you do try to avoid an operating deficit. And there is an advantage to fixed dollar levies like a substitute emergency levy because of the fact that they don't count towards your outside village. So what that means is there's the twenty mil floor. Military rate can't fall below twenty mils. If it does, it automatically ratchets back up. This is the first time in many years that mentors, relevant, and we're not really super close, but we're relatively close. We're, we're closer than we've ever been, so it could be something we should consider because, um, you do see growth on that. But it's unvoted, so there's, there's a, there's a potential consequence for that as well.
But a substitute levy might be a better description for our need. Does that make sense?
It does, but it, yeah, and it also has growth with the, the new construction, and it also allows us to potentially seek continuous, the money for a continuous amount of time, because we need that money. It's not, I think that's not gonna change. You saw what happens if we don't pass that.
And if we have a family who's moved to the community, has a new home that's been built, and they have children who are attending the schools, you know, we're, we're accommodating the needs of those children and educating them accordingly. So it makes sense that that would be reflected in the way we're asking the community to support our schools.
We have many new developments going in right now that are very family oriented. So I really like the substitute levy to allow that, because there, there are plans that could take fifteen years to develop these communities that are being built. It would give us an opportunity to.
Either way, my recommendation to the board is we do it for another ten years regardless whether you call it emergency levy or substitute levy. You know, at least we're doing it for ten years, and we're considering if we go to substitute continuous. It, it, it's a ten year levy now. I don't know why we would change, change that.
If you would say we would compare the other PI levy so that the voters would come to consider our request one time.
Correct. Yeah, my recommendation too, going on a PI levy needs, is if you do it, you would do it at the same time. So we're, we're communicating one message to our voters about the two levies.
Because there's a considerable amount of cost and time that we all invest in the process of asking, yeah, so going on the ballot. It's, it's considerable. And that's not, that we have to raise that money separately to fund that. That's not coming from.
We don't raise this, it's clear.
Well, I'm sorry.
The committee raised, there's a levy made raises. There's no, no tax dollars are spent on a voter show about.
That was my point, to say, you know, we have a committee that we ask citizens to assist with forming and go from there, so.
And voter fatigue as well.
Voter fatigue is, is it the practice that I understand?
Will, will we be asking them for a general levy like?
See, that's, this is why I have this on here, because like, we have to, we, it has to be part of the message. We have to communicate everything transparently and with a timeline, in my vision. You have to show everybody what, what's going to happen. Because we can't say, hey, you need to pass this emergency or substitute levy. We're gonna ask you to increase your taxes for a permanent crew levy, and it's gonna be used for this. And to give the presumption that that's gonna solve all the world's ills, because it's not. It, it won't. Get that, play that on the channel. Like it's not gonna solve the world's ills. We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to ask for general operating levy, even if we cut, which I'm going to suggest that we do. You're still gonna need general operating levy money. So we should tell the story as the story is. Hey, this is what we're going to do. We need to pass this emergency levy. We need your supports. It's not a tax increase. It's not any tax. We need this PI money because here's why. This is what it's going to get. This is what it's gonna pay for. This is what it's going to do. It's going to push off the need for a general fund operating levy for, till this point. And then we are going to do this so that we can put the levy on at this. And we have to say it loud and proud and a hundred million times, because even then, people are not gonna remember that we said that when we put the general operating levy on. It's just because it's, because not everyone, it's just, not everyone's as connected as the people are in this room. It's just the way it is, right? We have to, we have to communicate it. It has to be the mantra. That's why I've been saying this since I started last November. It's not going to change.
Phil, um, logistically, I'm like, let's say on the ballot, is it all in one, like?
No, it'd be two, it'd be two issues.
So you could say if somebody was like, I'm okay with renewal, but I don't want additional.
Yeah, a hundred percent. Yep. They won't be combined. That's a great question. They would be two issues. Obviously, we don't know the issues until we get it approved by the, uh, the board of elections. But you can choose to vote for the PI and not the renewal, or you vote for the renewal and not the PI. Or you can choose to vote for, or both, not four, but four vote.
If it was switched to a substitute levy, does, like on the ballot, does it not say renewal then there? Or like, does it say, emergency levy on the ballot, it would say renewal?
I have to, I don't know.
I'm just wondering, because if somebody goes in there not knowing, if they see renewal, it's like, oh, okay, it's a renewal, you know? But if they see substitute levy, they're like, oh gosh, that's a fine, you know?
Yeah.
And if, that would be important, the messaging, the noting taxes piece.
No increase.
No, no tax increase.
It's noting taxes. Can't say anything taxing to us, because depending upon the way that they have the error, credit will fall on everything else, so your taxes theoretically could go up.
Would it make sense to?
Not because of levy, just because everything else is happening, because the levy's still like in the same dollar amount, that's, so it's not a new tax.
Would it make sense to consider a two point five mil permanent improvement levy? Because we know that that is not exceeding the P I costs, and that that would then allow us to push out a general operating levy a bit longer for the negligible.
You wanna see?
Yeah.
So I ran a couple scenarios. Because my recommendation is the two point five mil levy for P I. Unless the board makes the decision not to do what we've agreed to do previously, which is fine, we can do that, but if we're going to have a five-year plan for everything, we need to be able to fund it. So unless we're going to change that plan, to me, it seems unwise to not have the revenue to fund that, it's just, it's not a good business model, right? Like, like, I wouldn't run a business that way, I wouldn't run the school district that way. That being said, as I said, there's still a need for general operating dollars. I think, I think five is unwise. I think the lower we can, you know, in that four to five range is probably the, would be a recommendation that I would make to the board. Um, I have five on here because I wanted to show you something. Five doesn't do it in twenty twenty-four. And this is our best-case scenario. That's certainly the best. It, yeah, it gets no better from here, it's just like.
That was gonna be my question, we're not up with the deficit.
No, we're still deficit spending. So this assumes, so this assumes two things, right? Let's just be clear. It assumes we're gonna pass in twenty-three, by November twenty-three, a two point five mil P I levy. And it also assumes that we're going to pass in twenty-four a five point oh mil operating levy. New one. Within a year of each other. Again, so this is what I'm saying, like, you have to, like, it has to be communicated. I have dollars.
The renewal also is approved or substitute, whatever.
Well, yeah, that, that, that's, that's, that's a no-brainer, like, that has to happen.
Yeah.
The renewal has to pass. The rest of this stuff doesn't, I mean, if it doesn't pass, we have issues, that renewal doesn't pass. You're gonna, yeah, you're in a crisis again. Because that was what saved us from the last crisis, so that's what that levy is, that's, that's the last crisis money that lasted twelve years before you needed an additional levy. Well, I don't wanna go on twenty-four, Bill, that seems awfully close to the P I levy you just sold me on. Okay, that's fine, Mr. Tuttle. I'll pass it. Five mil twenty-six. Well, or ten, twenty-five, so that collects. It's because it's in November of twenty-five at the latest, doesn't collect until the first half of twenty-six, doesn't collect full money until twenty-seven, right? So you kind of see, okay, we could, we could kick, we could do that. But we're still deficit spending, so we're gonna be on the levy again in three years, most likely, or four years. At the most. We've been at, so, but if we, Craig, so let's say about this in twenty, if I pass on twenty-five, last new money was in sixteen, that's nine years, twelve years, twenty-one years, so we're in about, what, ten and a half year levy cycle? That's pretty darn good for a district our size. But doing it this way, we're probably gonna be, we're gonna be drastically sooner than that. Again, assuming that we keep everything the same. If you do six mils in twenty-six, or twenty-six mils in twenty-five, excuse me, collecting half in six, not only are you looking for a new CFO, you still will be in that situation.
Phil, why is it that we don't so much in twenty-seven?
Because that's when we collect the full amount. So this is right here, it starts fourteen point, it's a fourteen, it covers fourteen million dollars. I really don't wanna have to try to convince people that the six mil levy is the answer.
And it's a little bit outside the average approval.
Yeah, the sweet spot's at four to five. I mean, it really is, I mean, you look at passage rates, and you look at the stats, and you look at the statistics. Presidential elections are a good time to do it too, contrary to popular belief. Voter turnout is important. You want everybody to have a vote. Again, but we can't wait till November, because here's the issue, if we don't pass it in November, now we're throwing, or now we, we are forced to wait over here. Or add, increase the, the amount that you need, or drastically decrease, right? There's always, I shouldn't just say increase, there's, there's, there's a decrease end to this. And there's, regardless, there's a decrease end. Because I'm gonna go back. Five mils in twenty-four doesn't do it. If we keep our spending the same way, we cannot. We have to flatten our expense curve. And I would argue, because if we want at least to get six years out of the levies by point, we have to, we have to be above one hundred and fifteen million dollars in some of these out years. So we have to cut two million dollars a year of the out years to do that somehow. Because we, it's the right thing to do, we owe to the taxpayer, and we need to stretch that money out as much as we can. The way, the tricky piece is, we have to do it without impacting student success and safety. Right? There's, there's decisions, there's management decisions to every dollar that's spent or not spent. So we can't sacrifice student success and safety. We're here to educate. Just as a reminder, this is how we spend our money. Seventy-two percent. Again, that's a little bit deflated because of the transfers out that we have this year, so it's probably closer to seventy-five, seventy-six percent of our money spent on salary and benefits. The other big area, this is the transfer out, it's inflated, kind of ignore this for now, our other two major areas are purchase services and supplies. You cannot solve the issue of purchase services and supplies alone. Nor should we solve the issue completely in the background voice. Recommendations, I know his decision together with me, but, you know, I can't keep my face to myself. Um, staffing. Anytime you have an alligator chart in your staffing world, it's not necessarily a good sign. Here's the alligator, its mouth is open. But why do we have an alligator chart right now?
Because we're spending more than one percent.
Uh, well, yes, but that's not why we have an alligator chart here. What did we do? In twenty twenty-one, to keep the schools open at the elementary level?
Reduce the class sizes.
Reduced the class sizes drastically, we added staff. What else happened during COVID? Enrollment dropped. So we had a decreasing enrollment, increasing staffing, so staffing went up, enrollment went down, now we have an alligators problem that's open, right? Mrs. Estes will tell you that I say that we're still chunky in our staffing world. I don't like to use the word fat, discriminatory, I like to say chunky. Means we still need the right size. This staff in twenty-one, the data in my chart didn't come out in twenty-two yet, hasn't been released to the state, to my analytics company. That is not as wide last year, and it's a little, it's a little less wide this year, but we have to, we, our district has prided itself, since, and I can say this from experience, since two thousand ten when I came in, or eleven, with Dr. Hoynes, and then we did it with Matt. Uh, I know Bill's done it, um, Craig and I are going to do it, we've had the discussions as we get out of the pandemic, and you can see, we've actually exceeded it, as enrollment's declined, we've actually, our staffings actually went down at a greater rate than it did, and we learned that from the fiscal crisis in two thousand four, when we had, not because of the pandemic. This was happening because of just poor decision-making on adding staff when we had decreasing enrollment back in two thousand four. You have to look at the data, right? You have, I mean, you have to, like, we do that, like, that's something we do. That's not the norm, and that was created by the pandemic so that we could keep the elementary schools open four days a week and have lower class sizes in the other areas, so that we could, you know, at the time, keep classes open. We've started to shrink them, right? We, every year, we've reduced staffing, we still, and, you know, I, once I get the updated one for twenty, that has last year's numbers, and I'll share it with you in the community as just a follow-up. Is it, this is exaggerated, because this was, this was the year, right? So we have to continue to right-size the district, we have to look at our class size numbers. There's research that will say once you get above seventeen kids in a class, the impact on instruction is negligible. I say that as your CFO, and I say that as your, as a, as an educational leader. So we have to have those discussions. The other thing that we need to consider, this is a I hurt some people's eyes, but for me, this makes sense. This is a, uh, stack bar graph for our five hundreds and our six hundreds, so five hundreds are supplies, six hundreds are, are capital, uh, outlay money. Not to be confused with our O seven O capital improvement fund, these are purchases that cost more than five thousand dollars. But remember, when I got hired, you guys approved a policy in November that said we would switch that threshold from five hundred to five thousand? So the reason why I put that together, because you have to look at them as a collective group. Because if you look at, at many one individual, it's misrepresented, because we switched how we classified things in the midst. What I would tell you is that pre-COVID, we were at about, let's say, five point four, five point five million dollars for our six hundreds and five hundreds. We had to spend a lot, more so than usual for cleaning supplies and a multitude of other things that we needed to keep the schools open. We've, we zero-based budget in our departments, which means that our departments, curriculum, HR, everyone that is on the administrative team has to provide a budget each year, we don't just, inflationary increases, we don't just say, because you had two hundred grand last year, we're gonna give you two percent more, so you're gonna have two hundred and four thousand dollars. We don't do that. We say, what's your budget gonna be for this year, what are you spending it on, what, you know, why, and then that goes to Mr. Heath, goes to the, uh, strategic plan. So in a lot of cases, we, these numbers that we're assuming in the out years are because that's what the, the department heads have given me. I always go back and say, hey, look, what you're giving me doesn't align to what you've spent in the past. So I get them to sharpen their pencil, sharpen their pencil, sharpen their pencil, but on some level, you could, you're just forecasting, so there's only so much pencil sharpening you can do on your out years. I would argue with Mr. Heath, and he agrees, I guess it's not really arguing. I would engage in professional discourse with our superintendent to say that we probably could do some savings on some of those out years by really questioning some of the things that we're spending on for five hundreds and six hundreds. So let's say we get five hundred grand here each year. We get some savings from staffing, we get some savings from the retirement center, and I'm gonna show you one more slide where I think we can get some savings, and I think we could probably tighten our belts by about two million dollars a year. What that is exactly yet, we don't know, we still need to figure out. But it can happen, but the reason why I show you this, because it's just cool, this is the nerd in me. Everything I did showed you, the P I levy, with changing the expenses and everything else, and taking the buses and the technology, everything out. Like, if you pass the two point five mil levy, this is what your chart looks like in your out years. So, that's just because. So, this is interesting, because in the state funding model, you've heard me say this before, we used to get money deducted from our state foundation for payments to kids to going to other schools. They used to reduce the funding, now you get, you get paid based on where the kid actually sits, butts in seats. So we dropped by one point five million dollars, not because of anything that we did here, just that the expense went away. Yet we're still projecting, and a lot of this comes down to, um, our technical services and our tuition subsidy, so special education, some other things that we have, and we're just projecting where we're at. But those are things that we can't control. If a student moves in who has an I U P, or students identify as a student who needs an I U P, and their least restrictive environment is in the school setting, but they need to have an occupational aide, they need to have a nurse, they need to have a one-on-one, or they need to be sent to cares to meet their needs, so we can educate that student, we can't control that cost. We've been, we've, we've created, you know, cares to help us control costs, so we've, you know, in some respect, we've done creative things to do that. Um, but, you know, we are a public school, we have to educate everybody, and we have to educate them on their needs. So, again, I think there's probably some savings here that will be realized as we kind of go through the process, and remember, every board meeting, I'm trending my report against what we forecasted, so you get an update on this every month. When I show revenue's trending higher and expenses are trending lower, it's, it's back to the forecasted amount. So again, you're getting that information monthly to gauge where we're at, and that obviously has trickled down in the out years. Yeah.
Um, the special education grants that are received, are those based on numbers, or are they, is it just like a dollar amount or percentage? How do we get those grants? Because I know we have two different ones, I'm not quite sure.
So, yeah, those, those are not included in the general fund, so those are monies that are, and, and much like a P I fund or a capital improvement fund, they're in their own special fund because they have been used and tracked for those specific purposes. But those are based on student, uh, population and demographics, as well as other areas of free, which lunch comes into play, and how well their district is considered uh, in comparison to other districts. So there would be districts that maybe have less students with special needs who receive more because of their demographic.
So it certainly doesn't just cover, like, what we actually need.
No.
Because I was looking at covers, because we didn't necessarily have that, so that needs to happen.
Yep. So the tax burden in a, in a district like ours is higher to our local taxpayer because of the fact that we're considered wealthy districts. And actually, because, and you'll, I'll say this again on Tuesday, it's worth mentioning here, our state funding per pupil dropped by three hundred and thirty dollars this year. Because of the fact that our valuations went up and our enrollment went down. So we're actually receiving more money, but we're receiving less per pupil because of those combinations of things. So we need to continue to find ways to keep butts in seats. So that being said, it's not any, again, and I would never say this, you'll never hear me say this, uh, I, I never did it this way in the four years I was at Kirtland, if you look at Kirtland's average cost per pupil, in the four years I was there, it actually dropped each year, our scores went up. It can be done, it just takes a lot of collaboration, which we have in this district, so I'm confident we're able to do it. That you can continue to look at things and change the way we're doing this, because we can't just ask for new money, we're gonna have to, we you saw clearly that, that we have to decrease. You saw clearly that, that we have to decrease spending. So we need to have that discussion. The last thing I'm going to leave you with before we get into a general discussion and probably get some direction, is you have to pass the expired emergency levy by no later than November twenty four. Obviously, we're not just putting it on here. We can put it on as early as November twenty three or in May twenty three. It's just a matter of how quickly we want to do it. I think having a new superintendent, um, we're going to have to keep that in consideration. We have the need to do it. Global climate, uh, we have factors of economic climate that we have to be cognizant of. The Citizens Financial Advisor says we've waited too long already to put the new P I levy on. You know, why didn't we do this back in eighteen nineteen? I believe is what they said, right? I mean, you guys, yeah. Because no one likes, the, the easy answer is no one likes going and asking for more money. I mean, that's just, so let's ride it out as long as we can. That's not really a good model. I do. I mean, I think we need to be thoughtful in that approach as well. You have to consider the P I levy. Here's our timeline. If you wanted to do a general operating levy, it's collected in twenty five. Here's the timeline. If you want to collect in first half of, you know, second half of twenty six. So just a visual for us to kind of keep in the back of our minds of when timing wise we have to do that. But again, every May, November, we have an update to the forecast. And if we continue to do better than we've projected on expenses, you know, the amount of money that we can ask would be less for the general operating levy. So if we could do reductions and maybe it's not as high a levy in twenty six, maybe it could form a levy in twenty six.
If we went ahead, knowing that we need to pass the renewal, the emergency levy or substitute, whatever, you know, is the best descriptor. And there's a strong case for the P I money. You've made, I think, an excellent snapshot here for us, Phil, um, for how that goes into all of our budget and our five year plan. So if we made our, attempted that in May of twenty twenty three, continue working on all cost savings and any other, um, variables that we'll have more information about, including maybe some staff that will be retiring and so forth, then we would at least tackle the first part that we know we need. And then have discussions as soon as we are aware of, you know, kind of how that's working out. And make our case and for an operating levy a year later, let's say, whatever kind looks the best.
Yeah, I mean, the longer you wait, the bigger, bigger the hassle.
Yeah.
The voter fatigue, they're very close together.
Because it would probably be ill advised to put off three. Yeah. I mean, unless you roll the dice.
I mean, in fact, I mean, yes, but you, for all intents and purposes, you would, you're, you're, you could. I, I guess I don't necessarily know how I feel on that, to be honest. Because of the fact that inherently you're asking for that money anyway. You're just saying, hey, we need seven point five mils of levy money. We need two point five to fund this. We need five mils to fund this. This is what this is going to be for. This is what this is going to be for.
If we maybe asked now, could we ask for less?
If it was, I mean, no, but if we did all three.
It doesn't change. Well, you could probably ask for less. Yeah, we asked for all in calendar year twenty three. Because you circulate it in twenty four, you could reduce how much mileage you would need for general operating.
I think, see, I know, I feel like we may as well just remember, I feel like that gives us a whole, you know, year. But I know Craig, you can mention about doing like a community survey just to make sure ahead of time. So it gives us enough time to address any kind of issues and make sure people feel confident. Is that still kind of something we can do with this?
Yeah, and, and that's still something we're working with, uh, an outside company to try and get that community survey done. So I think depending on what our conversation is here, that, that could probably cost a good timing of what that would take place.
Who focus groups be valuable because you could have a more interactive dialogue in addition to the survey. So I wouldn't replace one with the other, but.